Continue. Hello. Oh, wait, there's Bethlin. Um, she must have been in the waiting room.
All right, the agenda wasn't in our folder, so I had to go in another way to find it.
Yep, no, I know. I, I had the same issue.
But all right, completely understand. There's been 10 million things going on.
Yes, there has. Carrie, good evening, people. Thank you for joining us. Um, as Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mary Branley.
Yes.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Bethlin Houlihan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Here.
Lydia Clancy here, and we will not have a student rep here with us tonight because they're done with us. They're done with the school year. They're done. They don't want to deal with us anymore. So we'll see them in September.
It's their graduation.
Huh?
Their graduation.
Who's at graduation?
At their graduation. We're gonna...
Well, no, these were mostly juniors.
Yeah.
Are they all juniors?
Yep. I don't know if they were all, but mostly.
Okay.
Uh, Steph, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade.
Here.
Do I see my... Nope. Okay. Um, a lot of teachers and speakers are logging on later. Jeff Ferranti.
Here.
Jennifer Gaudette.
Here.
Oh, Charles Gabron is with us this evening. Or not.
Is he speaking, or he just maybe wants to listen to you? Hi?
I don't know. I'm going on. Brian Haas.
Hi.
Here. And I do see Charles waving at you, by the way.
Yeah.
I wasn't unmuted. Thank you. Thank you for muting me.
Thank you. Um, and Wayne White. Who is at some barbecue place, eating wings and pulled pork, making us all jealous. Thank you for that. Bring me some collards.
I'm here.
Okay, anticipated guest speakers, I do not believe, but tonight we have Basic and Fresh Picks coming, and hopefully they will join us at around eight o'clock. This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely per Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 executive order issued in response to the state of emergency and the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the open meeting law requirement to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. All members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order permits public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded the public so they can follow along with the meeting's deliberations. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature a citizen's comment period. This committee is convening via Zoom video conference as posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible and viewable, audible to and viewable by the public. Additionally, please let the Chair know if you are recording or broadcasting this meeting prior to doing so, please click the raise your hand button at the bottom right now if you plan to record or broadcast this meeting. I do not see any hands raised. I will assume nobody is broadcasting or recording. Meeting materials. Most, no, not true. Some of the supporting materials have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools website under School Committee. I apologize that they aren't all available. We have been crunched for time, and we will get them up there as soon as we possibly can. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Ground rules before we go to the first item on the agenda permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide a single comment, question, or motion. I will go through the line of members again for additional comments or questions as time allows. Please hold off speaking until your name is called, and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please do not interrupt anyone who is speaking and cease speaking if the Chair requests you to do so. Finally, each vote taken at this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Any citizen wishing to make a comment to be read during this meeting and entered into the public record may do so by emailing um, comments to comments for SCmeeting@maynard.k12.m-a.us. And Colleen is going to post that in the chat, I think. Thank you. Comments need to be emailed in advance and will be received up until the citizens' comments agenda item is addressed. Your email must include your first and last names and street, street address in order for it to be read. Emails without names and/or addresses cannot be read. To ensure that your statement is read in its entirety, a 350-word limit is suggested. Statements longer than 350 words may be cut short at the three-minute mark in the interest of time, but will be submitted for public record. Comments are limited to three minutes or 350 words to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard. The Chair will read only one statement from each citizen. However, citizens can submit any additional comments for the public record by providing a copy to the Chair via email up until the end of the meeting, specifically stating their desire to have these additional comments included. Please be aware that the citizens' comments agenda item is devoted, is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the citizenry. As such, its structure primarily supports unidirectional public recording of citizens' comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. And since the governor is lifting the pandemic and requirement to meet remotely as of June 15th, that might be the last time I have to read that thing. Oh, no, Colleen wants to tell me something.
He does have legislation to extend it to September first.
Okay, can you not ruin my night, please?
Sorry.
Thank you.
But it's not active yet.
Okay. All right, so now approval of minutes. Without objection, I would like to approve the minutes for 41321, which was a special meeting, and for 1521. So, Mary.
I had a question on the 15th more. Um, I think in the past, we've actually put public hearing at the top versus down below, so that it's really, um, it's just a layout type of thing, so I didn't know if that was getting too picky, um, but I...
No, I think that's good. I think that's good, so people don't have to read down through, like...
It's on the first page. It says...
At the top. We usually put it at the top, you know, remote meeting, public hearing at the very top title. That's all. We've done that in the past, just so that, again, it's just easy if people want to, you know, scroll through minutes and find it, so.
I know, I know what you're referring to, Mary. I can fix it like that.
Thank you. That was it. All I had.
All right, so, um, without objection, I'd like to approve them with that one addition. Any objection? Nope. All right, they are approved.
I wanted to actually note, not, nothing about approving, um, but just to call something out because it came up in our budget subcommittee meeting on the minutes for 413 that I asked about the using ClearGov, and so I just wanted to bump that up for the, um, tracking the MSBA process. I think, Brian, that was a takeaway for you. So, I know we got brought up this yesterday as well, but seeing it in the meeting minutes also reminded me that...
Wait, I'm confused. You want that included in the meeting minutes, or the meeting's...
No, it's in the meeting minutes for 413.
Got it.
Already. I just happened to, we just talked about it yesterday in our budget subcommittee meeting, and so it just jogged my memory again that I know, I think, Brian, I was, a takeaway for you to look into of how we can have that MSBA process for Green Meadow as that project in...
That's something that our OPM will do once we hire them.
Yeah, I don't even know how it works, but I thought it was like, that's what they do for the COVID at the town level, and so be cool for following. If we get more value out of ClearGov, that would be great.
Yep. Um, okay.
So they have their...
Oh, Mary, we can't hear you again.
Oh.
With your speaker.
I guess my issues are contagious, huh, Mary? My speaker issue?
Mary seems to have this problem a lot, though. Where she just cuts out.
Is she just giving us the evil eye now, or is she giving the computer an evil eye?
There we go. We can hear you.
Don't move.
Yeah, it's the second time that I've had it gone, go haywire or so, but no, yeah, so they, so they do have, um, that you'll, when we do, when we hear the presentations, you'll, you'll see what they have to offer, which is great.
Okay, on to the warrants. Without objection, I would like to accept warrants 21-063, 21-064, 21-065, and 21-066. Are there any objections? I do not see or hear any, so those are now accepted. Urgent business. Brian, do we have any urgent business?
No, we have no, we have a lot of business, but nothing new and urgent.
Okay, uh, student representatives' report will not happen tonight, and I don't think it's going to happen on the 15th either. Citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments? I haven't seen any. There's one in there. Oh, there is? Well, it's labeled citizens' comment. I don't know. Yeah, it's, it's the slideshow for, for Basic, yeah.
Okay. Do we want to read it, though, since it was indicated as a system comment?
No, she says in her email that she just sent it there just because she was trying to cover all her bases to make sure that it, we received it before the meeting. Okay. Um, and that will get pulled up later on. Um, did, did, oh, superintendent's report. Brian?
Yes, I'm glad to be here. We actually have 40 or so people joining us tonight, so that's really exciting.
They want to know about the before and after school programs.
I know they do, and I'm not going to spoil their thunder. I am, I will say, um, I am really excited. Both Wayne and I have met um, on Zoom multiple times with the people representing Basic, which stands for Belmont After School Enrichment Collaborative. And they've actually been out to our site and toured both the Fowler and the Green Meadow schools. So we're really excited to collaborate with them, and they're at a point in their sort of evolution where they're able to expand. So it's a, it's sort of an exciting time that we're in need, which we have never been before, of this, of a program like this, and they're at a position where they're able to expand. So I think the stars have aligned, I hope, and I'm going to let them talk about their program a little bit later in the agenda. But just know that we have been working with them, and we're really excited in terms of the programming that they offer. I think it'd be a really good thing for everybody. We definitely heard that, hey, this is a need that the community has in Maynard, and we looked at as many options as we could and tried to find something that was an add to the community, and we could get done within the timeframe we have. So I'm very excited to have them here tonight. They'll be tuning in in probably about a half hour or so for their presentation. So that is exciting news. Might be the most exciting thing I have to share with that. I think lots of people are interested in, but really their presentation will be even better. MSBA is an ongoing process. We've been working tirelessly, um, going through the process to find an OPM to represent us. That's an owner's project manager. Um, and they really will pick up a lot of the communication and just sort of ushering us through this process, if you will. So we've met, we've interviewed three different companies. We're actually in the process of checking references, and we meet again tomorrow. And by next week, we anticipate having a finalist at that point. So it's very exciting, and it's just one more sort of box that we need to follow through in terms of the process to submit our paperwork to the MSBA, um, sort of the governing body, if you will, by later this month, so that it's in their hands prior to their executive board meeting in the beginning, in the middle of July. So that is also really exciting, because if you know Green Meadow, you know this is something that we need, uh, both the school and the community, so that's an exciting piece for us. We've sent out recently dates and programs for summer programming that we're really excited about, and they went out late last week. They're probably already on the website, right, Colleen? Just nod if they're on the website, or not, and they will be tomorrow. Um, but they definitely went out to families already, and, and so this is exciting. It's one of the things we're able to do is really have sort of an extensive summer programming option for students this year, and a lot of places, or a lot of school systems are doing that, adding summer options for students, because we know it was a pretty disjointed year. So we're doing everything we can to put that together um, on a variety of levels, everything from joining with the Boys and Girls Club on some of the programming, to high school credit recovery for some of the kids that might have struggled more than we, what we had hoped, to some enrichment and before and after school type programming. So it's just, it's exciting programming that's coming for the summer, and hopefully you saw that. And you're thinking about, hmm, should I go on vacation, or should I enroll, or better yet, can you do both? Enjoy your vacation and spend some time with us this summer. I think that would be preferable. So the other things that I reference in my report are really upcoming presentations. So again, I'm not going to steal Food Services Thunder. I will say that Fresh Picks, it has been a heck of a year for schools across the country, for schools in Massachusetts, and Fresh Picks has worked with us since the day I started. They have been willing to meet. We have had multiple meetings with both Wayne and his staff and the Fresh Picks folks, and really figured out, how do we see all these people? What are our, and they have been a team player all the way through, from helping us get food delivered to five different locations across the town on a consistent basis, to then, once we brought kids back, feeding kids inside the schools, breakfast, lunch, without all the normal accommodations that we have. I mean, now we have to be, we, until recently, we're six feet apart, and we're still six feet apart this year. Um, and MASC, and just dealing with all the guidelines from CDC, from DESI, from DPH. They have been a team player all the way along, and they've heard, you know, people that we've brought concerns to them, like it, the food might not be hot enough here, or this, or that, whatever the complaint is. They were really team players, and they heard that, and they said, let us figure out how to adjust, and they adjusted all the way along throughout the year. And I don't have the numbers, but it's in the, you know, thousands upon thousands of breakfasts and lunches that we served and continue to serve all the way to really make sure, quite frankly, that we don't have hungry kids, because hungry kids aren't going to learn well, and we want our kids to be successful. So I know they have a presentation coming up, so that's really all I'm going to say for them, because they have exciting news as well. Absolutely. Stay tuned to the weekly newsletters that are coming from your respective buildings. There are so many end-of-the-year events, and there's a parade tomorrow on the senior parade that's going to drive around to each of the schools, so the kids can cheer them on. We're going to hope the rain holds off, or we can be under the over, overhangs out front. But that's exciting. A lot of, as one of the things that I think will stay, sort of that came out of COVID, was a parade, because a lot of schools did that last year. And it was great. It was super successful. Families, communities got together and cheered on the graduating seniors. So again, that's one of the things we're able to continue to do, and that happens tomorrow. Um, graduations a week from Friday. Um, and there's just, and then there's an eighth grade graduation even after that, but there's lots, lots of events at each building that are developmentally appropriate for the students, so watch the newsletters, watch the website. It's exciting. It's starting to feel like school again. We're starting to be able to do the celebrations and, you know, recognize the kids and the teachers, and it feels good. It's very exciting. Um, later in on the agenda I see is the superintendent update progress report, my progress report. So I think I will do that at that point, if that's good with you, Madam Chair, so that the other people can, the teachers and the presenters can go first. Okay, then I am done for now. I'll come back to join you.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, okay, I just have a quick little, we're, nothing much. We had our, our MAS C workshop regarding, um, the school committee's oversight of budget. That was really helpful, and we learned a lot, and I think we learned some of the things that we've been doing well and some of the things we've been doing completely incorrectly, and so we hope to make some changes and improve going forward. The superintendent evaluation process is beginning tonight. He will give us his self eval, and then on Monday, we are going to discuss the new, um, performance evaluation rubric that MASC has released. This is our first time using it, so, um, bear with us. Yes, Natasha?
Um, is it possible that before we get to that part in the meeting, that a draft form, Brian, of your that evaluation can be publicly accessible somewhere on the website? I think to give people, it's a long document, and it could be helpful, the public is able to see that. The superintendent valuation is a critical piece of the public engagement as well as as a hearing, and I I didn't see what the supporting documents uploaded with the agenda.
Oh, we can't hear you.
Me? You can't hear me?
No, you can't hear me. I was...
Oh, okay. I was like, oh, I didn't know where to start over.
Are we talking about the document that I uploaded, or the superintendent rubric?
No, that, the draft document, that, the one that you uploaded, that, that we will be...
Isn't it in the folder?
It's in the folder, but it wasn't included. It wasn't in the...
Backup document.
Agenda.
So we can, I can have Colleen post that to the website tomorrow, if that's what you're asking?
No, she wants it, um, to be available now so that people in the audience can follow along.
It's a long document, and so I think without context that there's just something that, I know the superintendent evaluation is something, it's one of the parts that's done publicly for a reason, for transparency, so I just want to make sure the public has access to what's documents that are going to be provided and discussed.
Sure.
Thanks.
Is, is that?
I don't...
I don't know if that's a possibility. Is that a possibility, Colleen?
If I have the soft, I think I have the software on this computer to do it. Do you want me to...
I thought there was a place where we had the, the other, like, the mid, the mid-year one. I thought it would just go wherever that was. I don't know if there's a certain folder that's already been established for...
I can attach it to Monday's agenda, so it's quickly and easily found.
It's funny, as long as the public can follow along. Thank you.
Okay, um. So, um, so Monday, we will be discussing the rubric and how to use it, and then each member will complete their own individual assessment. And on our June 15th meeting, at our June 15th meeting, we will publicly discuss our evaluation and present it to Brian as his formal summative review for, um, for this year. And, um, school committee also would like to do a self-evaluation, and I am going to work, I, I have I'm working with Dorothy Presser from Massachusetts Association of School Committees on, um, putting together a survey to send out. We'd like to send it out to the community and to staff to get feedback on how we did this year, how they feel. The superintendent did this year, how they feel, you know, their support was, what the culture of the district is, that sort of thing. We just want to get a feel for how people are, are viewing the work that was done this year and how they feel about going into the next school year, so keep an eye out for that. And then that is it. So now we go on to the MPS teacher presentation, if they're here. We went kind of quick, and if they aren't planning on being here till eight o'clock, I don't know. I see we have um, okay, Betty's here, Susan's here. Um, can we unmute them? Who else do we have?
The Fowler School representative, Maria Solar, was coming on at eight, or just before eight.
Okay, so...
The time that it had been sent.
And then Betty, you have Jim coming with you too, right?
James, yeah.
James, sorry. Um. Is that, is he here, actually? Is that who JT is? Do we know?
I think that's James Taylor.
He's going to take out his guitar any minute.
And Chuck, do you want to be, um, unmuted for this, or are you just here to hang out? Oh, he's unmuted. Nope, he's muted again.
Hi, I'm, I'm, I'm hanging out, but I'm
Okay.
answering questions or helping if needed.
Um, so, Colleen, we don't know if JT is...
I clicked to unmute, but he didn't, so I'm assuming it's not him.
It's not. Okay, all right. So, um, why don't we start with Susan anyway, since she is GM and she's here? And then if we have to, we'll skip to the high school and then go back to Fowler.
I don't know that I have a half an hour worth of chatting, but...
Oh, come on.
Thank you for having me tonight.
You do.
Happy. Thank you for having me. Happy to represent, uh, Green Meadow teachers, uh, who have worked tirelessly last summer and this whole year to make sure we've had a successful year. I will say that coming to the end of it, I feel really good about what we did this year. Couple of things that we noticed that were positive in the learning were smaller class sizes for the teachers was a big benefit, and the hybrid learning allowed them to have a larger chunk of time with students. So they got a lot more skill base built. They found that was really wonderful. Instead of running back and forth to specials and recesses and whatnot, they were really focused on learning during that time, and then they went and did their other things later. Um, so that was one big benefit. Um, personally, as one being remote most of the time, um, I really built a better relationship with my students because it was the Hollywood Squares. Um, it was really individualized, and they could raise their hand and share things with me that I would never have had an opportunity to discuss with them. And so I found that really, uh, for me, very invaluable. And when we came back in person, I really understood these kids a lot better and their behaviors better. Um, some students who were challenging in the classroom were stars in remote learning, and so calm and so thoughtful, and I really got to know them. When they come back in a large classroom where it's busy and hectic, they, you know, behaviors change a little, and you could kind of see how they manage that, the difference. So that was a big eye-opener for me. Student technology skills increased, obviously. They learned how to use Google Meets and Google Classroom, and they learned how to do typing. Uh, found that out in the chat a lot. I'm sorry about the phone. The, uh, com, teacher planning time was helpful on those Wednesdays, so having a big chunk of time to just sit with your team and really plan things out was a really big benefit for all the teachers. Let's see, uh, independent learning skills increased since they weren't constantly in the classroom with the teacher, kind of directing them. They had to go off and do things on their own. Um, we rebuilt the Andu Close Library that had been destroyed during the asbestos and the wing closing, um, so teachers now have great resources, which is a huge benefit. It was a big change in parent-teacher relationships, too. Um, I actually had parents come on my Zoom, come on my Google Meets and kind of check in with me and say, well, thumbs up, you're doing a great job, or I have a question about this. Um, I normally wouldn't really see parents or talk to them unless there was a problem, so it was kind of nice to have that relationship as well. Our work with the safety committee over the summer helped students, parents to, excuse me, teachers to feel confident and safe coming back into the buildings. The guidance staff worked to promote a lot more SCL, and we're able to do that more one-on-one, since it was, um, there was a lot of that, uh, remote face-to-face time. Oh, the creed, the special schedule that we created when we came back person was a very interesting approach. It made our staff feel safer, that they had with the same kids for two weeks. Um, students had less disruption in terms of they knew what was coming. Um, it wasn't what special do we have today? It was kind of like they knew every day we're going to this special, and this is what our routine is going to be. See, what else do I have? Uh, the lunch program was one out without, went on without a hitch, which was great. Let's see, and I think I mentioned the other items already, so I think that's pretty much...
Thank you. Um, so, going forward, what sorts of things can the school committee do to help you guys do your jobs better, or help improve you know, the, the day-to-day workings, or, um, support, I don't know, a positive learning environment?
Yeah, I think we just, I think one thing that we learned also is to be super flexible. Rethinking, you know, thinking, doing the two-week specials was kind of thinking out of the box, and being, having the ability to do that was very helpful for the teachers, um, and I think for students as well. And I think that next year, there's some... And I think that next year, there's some little things that we learned that we can incorporate. One of the things that Rob mentioned was, um, parent conferences, there was a lot more participation. They didn't have to get a babysitter. Um, so maybe offering an option of in-person, but also a remote meeting. Uh, so that those parents that don't need to get a babysitter to talk to their teacher to find out what's going on and how their child's doing.
Okay, um, all right. I'm gonna go through and see if any of the other school committee members have any questions. I'm gonna start with Jessica Clark.
Um, I really appreciated how you brought up one of the silver linings being you got to know students a little bit differently via and understand behaviors on a different level than you may have been able to in the past. Are there any ideas of how we could continue that going forward when we get back to, you know, quote-unquote, more normal classroom settings?
Yeah, that's an interesting thought. Um, I think I need to spend some time thinking about that. One of the things I personally was considering is slowing down. I'm kind of always in a rush to get the projects done, but just slowing down and taking a moment to speak with each child individually. Ask if they have anything they want to share with me, sit next to them. That's a little chaotic in my room sometimes because there's so much going on. We're so busy, we're cutting, we're gluing, we're doing painting. And I liked that things just really slowed down with the kids. And so I think maybe at the beginning of the year, spending a little more time building that relationship with each child before we move on to the crazy curriculum type part.
Thank you. Okay, Beth Lynn?
Oh, I, I guess I really appreciate just getting to here in this natural experiment that we've all been in. What we can glean from this that is actually useful. And I think we could all talk about those things because everything's a mixed bag for sure. I guess the thing that occurs to me as you're talking was kind of Jessica's question about thinking about very intentionally and thoughtfully about like, there are things that we want to try to carry forward into in-person in some way or fashion. And um, I've heard this too in the context of um telehealth, telemedicine. That when doctors are able to see um families and children in their own homes, those children, everyone's more relaxed. And so you get a much better sense and quality of interaction in some ways. And I don't know that that's always possible and, but it's not true across the board. So it ends up being the, for some people, it, and some, I know there were some students and families that were really struggling with this as well. And we'll be glad to be back in person um for so many reasons. So um, that intentionality ends up being around like also different needs from different, trying to figure out how you work with all of them. I'm more commenting and thinking about like questions for how to like continue in this conver. I don't think there are any easy answers, but I appreciate like thinking about it. And I don't know if you have, if you've been having any of those conversations as teachers to this point, you might be just trying to get through the year. But I'm just curious about that.
Well, I, I have definitely talked to my team about it and the pros and cons, you know, obviously teaching PE remote was quite a challenge. Yeah, teaching art was, I had to be very flexible. I had to say, okay, whatever you have at home. And how can I make this lesson work with whatever you have or don't have? But we've had those conversations about, oh, I noticed this about this child that, you know, maybe uh impulse control was an issue in the classroom. But one-on-one on the camera, the child would unmute and tell me things I would never have known about them. So yeah, that's definitely one of those things that we want to continue to, to make sure we can build those connections um, and really get to know the kids a lot more. Without focusing quite so quickly on curriculum. Um, and that's important, obviously, but it's they're not gonna be as successful unless they know you and trust you. So that's, that's one of the things I'd really like to.
Yeah.
Great. Well, thank you.
Okay, and Natasha?
She's muted.
She's muted.
Okay, hello, can you hear me? Okay, great. Uh, thank you so much. I, I think a lot of the things that you said just are encompass so much of the feedback that we've been hearing. You know, it has been very vulnerable for teachers this past year where you have parents in your classroom in a way that's a, another set of eyes. And, you know, I know in many ways, parents have appreciated learning about their own children, how they're learning in a classroom. I know that from a teacher's perspective, it's put another focus, another, you know, of, of how you're engaging. And so I appreciate that vulnerability that teachers have had to work through with having another supervisor, you know, basically present in um many cases. And, and still, you know, accomplishing and doing good and, and doing the best with that feedback. So I'm glad that you've gotten positive reinforcement from parents with, when they've kind of given you the thumbs up in the background. Because that's, I think, probably can't be understated on how, how much of a lift it's been um, in, you know, re, learning how to educate differently. A couple of things that you, you've mentioned that I really wanna kind of take home and think about how we can continue. The relationship building with the students is so critical. And I know at that young age, um, is where that starts, right? What's where their love for school really is, is beginning and flourishing. And um, I'm glad we're having the conversation about exploring conferences remotely. I would even hope that we would not just um use that narrow scope about maybe remote parent-teacher comp. Even if it's just like a check-in, you know, that it'd be more, it'd be easier for a teacher to, you know, have a quick, you know, fifteen-minute Google meet maybe with a parent that, you know, something, so it doesn't have to wait necessarily. But getting that face-to-face, you know, before things are kind of um snowballing. I think it allows that opportunity to do that where they're not having to get childcare, but that they can still remain engaged even from home with their, their children, that partnership, that school dome um partnership is, is just so critical. I also wanted, just curious what your thoughts are that um because you mentioned about the children's behaviors, how they're different, right, at home and sometimes in school. Is it that you're, you're seeing maybe they're with their peers and a physical presence, there might be um resistance to engage if they're hesitant or unsure of themselves, because that's the feedback that I've heard. But that in a remote environment, they might be okay with raising their remote hand. Like that, it almost provides like a blanket of security in some weird way that things are remote. Sometimes those kids who have a little bit more anxiety about, you know, in the classroom might, it kind of doesn't give that. It might engage a little bit better. Is that your experience?
For sure. I have a couple of students who super quiet, would never really share, just kind of wanted to do their work. And that, you know, you know, just peaceful, quiet little kids, don't really say much, but they don't seem anxious, so they don't seem uncomfortable. Who would absolutely be, this is Ursula, can I please share? And they'd tell me things that I would be like, oh, and they'd show me their rabbit, or they'd show me their, I had one girl whose rabbit was jumping on her back. You know, I mean, I've seen every pet that is in Maine or just so you know, um, whether, for the K-3. So yes, my quiet students um did definitely engage a lot more. Uh, and then on the other hand, this, the children who would jump out of their chair and run across the room and um would sit and say, oh, look, Mrs. Esley, I wanted to tell you this, and I wanted to share this with you, and look at what I've done at home. And um, it was just a real joy. And, and it was, it was definitely a challenge. I'm used to being running around my room instead of sitting with a document camera. Um, and, but I really enjoyed, again, those connections that I didn't, I didn't see um in the busy classroom. Um, and you know, as a specialist, you see them like once a week maybe. And it, it just was a different, I love being in my room, I love seeing them face-to-face again. But I, it definitely highlighted for me um the behavior changes and the kids that came out of their shell that wouldn't normally. So, yeah.
Well, I, I, I think being in the classroom, obviously, is the primary, you know, benefit for kids. But I also don't want to lose sight of how some kids benefited from a different learning experience, which kind of goes to the individualized. You know, each student sometimes, you know, has different needs that we need to be creative in, in trying to meet. My last question really would be about, um, as we think about where we're ending the year and going into next year as a teacher, how do you feel that, what kind of supports do you think that you would need in your classroom, you know, to help as all kids come back in? If you imagined, or what is it that teachers are kind of thinking about that would be the most worrying in preparing for a full return in the fall?
Um, I'm actually not, I'm feeling very confident about going into the fall. I feel like, you know, we've got a good rhythm going. It's regular school with masks in my room. And I feel confident that going back, it's gonna be a great year. I, one thing that I definitely benefited from, and I would have to give Adam a giant shout-out, is um he allowed me to have a demo screen. They're demoing these touch panels, uh, and he installed one in my room, and it has completely changed the way I teach. And the kids are so engaged, it's just their joy. They, um, I can play a video for them. And so when they have our thirty-minute classes, we do like a draw-along and they're super engaged. And they're sitting in their seats. And normally, it would be kind of hectic during free trial time, but they, they're really enjoying it. And I've been sharing a lot of great educational videos with them, but I can sit at my desk with my document camera and every kid can see what I'm doing. And that's a big change from them huddled around a demonstration table and bumping each other and knocking. And he's touching me and he's in my way. And, you know, I have to stop fifty times, but they don't, they just sit and do their, do, they focus. And it's been a huge game changer for me. So thank you for that. Technology's been a big help.
That is awesome. Thank you.
Mary?
Yeah, um, thank you, Susan, very much. And I really appreciate your positive attitude throughout this. The, the smile and the finding all the good things that did happen, because they're definitely, as difficult a year as it was, there's definitely been some good things coming out of it. And I will say, talking to parents, any of them that have been watching over the shoulder of their kids have a whole new appreciation for what you all do. You know, you make it look so easy and they saw how difficult the job, how much work goes into it. So that was one really good thing, I think, that came out of this, is that you, you are very much more appreciated than you were a year ago, a year and a half ago. So um, my, my question was, again, I, I think there are things that we can learn coming out of this. And I'm hoping that we don't go backwards to the way we did it. And, and one of the things that you just brought up about, um, about the screen and, and the technology and that is um something that I'm hoping is gonna be incorporated now into going forward. Do you see that being, because one of the things that I did find, in one family, you would find that one of the kids was doing really, really well, excelling remotely, and the other kid was just struggling. So those kids, so to help both of them, I mean, obviously, one really needed to be in the classroom more to get that support. But the other child was doing so well remotely that I'm hoping that um we're gonna be able to better differentiate than maybe in the past. And part of it, a lot of it has to do with the technology, because it was a huge learning curve for all of you, for all of us. I mean, I had never done a Zoom meeting before, you know, so um, I'm really hopeful that we're gonna be bringing some of those good tools going forward. So um, what everybody else has said, any support that we can give you related to things that you've learned from this past year to push our school system forward, we're all ears. So.
Well, I will say that one big thing that um I heard from classroom teachers was the, the smaller class size group at once was a huge benefit. Um, and additionally, having a chunk uh of time in the classroom where they could really dig into a lesson. Maybe, you know, whereas in past years, based on preps and whatnot, they might have a fifteen-minute chunk of math and then have to go to a special. And then they come back and try to finish the lesson. So having that morning time allowed them to really um dig into each lesson and then move on to something else. Um, that was a feedback I heard for sure from um teachers. So I think if we can somehow schedule that a little bit better, at least on the Green Meadow side, um, the pet, the, the teachers definitely benefit from that. And the students, obviously.
Yeah, thank you. Awesome. Thank you very much, Susan. I am going to move on to Maria Soler. Welcome, Maria. I'm glad you could join us. Sorry, we started early.
No, that's fine. Um, good evening, everyone. Um. What do you need from me? What would you like to know?
What do you want us to know?
What do you want me to, uh, what do you wanna know? Um, no, for sure, it's been a challenging year. It has many positive uh things. It also has many challenging things, like everything. I'd like to start with the, with the positive. Um, uh, I think that especially for me, it's been a personal growth, uh, and professional growth. I've had to stretch myself big, a lot, to, to really and, and, and deliver that message to my students too, which has been great. We can do this, it's okay, things, you know, uh, are not going well. Let's just find a solution. So that has been, uh, you know, that's just the, the, the message that I have sent to them and to myself all year. Um, and that has helped um quite a bit. So we're growing, we're learning, and it's okay. And if it doesn't work today, tomorrow is a new day. So that's the attitude that we always took. So I think that that um kept me focused. I kept my students focused. Um, and um, so that, that was, that has been, that has been good. Less time wasted on transitions.
Yeah.
Um, so that has, you know, actually, now that the students are back and it's, it's like, oh, we need to cut a few minutes short because we need to go to PE or we need to go to health. And, you know, those five, sometimes ten minutes, depending on, you know, how talkative or rowdy they are or how fast they line up or not. Um, I have, were, you know, I, I miss them. I miss not having those, you know. I, I miss having that time, because we could accomplish a whole lot more. Flexibility in, in the planning and that differentiating. So there has been, I, I had to really, I've had to really dig into like the way, you know, uh, what, what works for you. So what, planning, and then maybe it doesn't work, so we'll change it. And then some of the kids were like, uh, how about if I do it this way? And yeah, okay, that works for you. Wonderful. Okay, let's do it. This is what you need to accomplish. As long as this is accomplished, we're good. So um, that flexibility has been, has been great. Um, for them, for me. Um, stretching, stretching my thinking really in, in learning new skills. I used to think like, oh, you know, I'm too old to learn, you know, a new, you know, tech or a new, you know, platform or a new this or a new that. And it's like, well, you know what? I'm actually not that old to be learning it. Uh, learning from the kids, having them teach me. Like, I've been stuck and they're like, yeah, you're having problems with that again. Yes, so who can fix it for me? So, um, so that, that's sort of like easy easiness in the classroom of just, you know, we're, we're learning this, we're all in this together, this is new for all of us. And sending that message of, you know, being flexible, this is new, we're learning, growing. So that has been huge for, for me, for my students in the classroom. Um, certainly saving, you know, gas, because I drive from Worcester. So that has been great, not putting, it was not putting that many miles into my car. That was good too. Um, and not spending that much time on that commute had, was, you know, was definitely, uh, at the beginning was, was great. Being able to dress from the waist up was great too, you know? So, and staying in my PJs, so um more relaxed. So those are the silly things that were really good from, from doing this on, um, online. Um, we, at the beginning, we had those Wednesdays, uh, you know, where kids did the asynchronous work. Um, and that, and that worked well because we had collaborative time and meetings. Although sometimes there were a lot of meetings. Um, but we were able to, to do the adult stuff. Uh, I was able to do a whole lot more correcting in the afternoons, meet with the kids. And I had that Zoom meeting and I could meet one-on-one. So I thought that was really, and, and I miss that from, from, from the schedule now. So, so that was, um, that was good. Um, challenges for me, uh, my classroom specifically was a sort of like an outlier. I continued the whole year with a concurrent teaching because I do the Spanish immersion. Because I do the Spanish immersion. So I had a group of students whose parents, you know. Chose to to have their students remote and that was great, but I was teaching two classrooms. Um, at a time and 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 there were challenges uh, with that. But the class was also able to stay together and I was able to connect my. You know, in-person students with them. I did a lot of breakout rooms so they could really, you know, talk and chat. And share their work. So there was a lot of collaborative work in 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 what I did because. Um, they needed each other. They really needed the social connections, but they also needed to to show each other what they were doing. So I did a lot of that and and that was, that was, that was really great. I'm continuing to do that. I still have that, that's. You know, that classroom situation. So I do a lot of of breakout rooms and 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 grouping that way. And and the remote kids, you know, including them in in everything that I do. Um. Challenges, wow, the stress. Um, yeah, it, uh, there were days that was um, in trying to be. I'm gonna be very honest with you, just trying to be. Present for the kids took a lot of stress so they, I would not give them my stress. So just trying to pretend that everything was okay when I was really not always feeling. Okay, was very hard because I did, uh, that's not what, you know. Uh, I didn't want to cause them anymore, you know, any more stress than what they were, you know, going through. So trying to stay together and trying to stay put at times is very difficult. Because I felt that I had to be very strong when inside I was not feeling very strong at times. Um, yeah, um. Issues such as, you know, technology, you know, not working properly. Were, you know, very frustrating at times. Uh, there were things beyond our control. And and as I told you at the beginning, you know, when I started talking to you, it was something that we're like, well, we can't do anything about it. We're just taking one day at a time. Today, maybe tomorrow it will be better. And that was the message I constantly sent. Um, but connectivity issues were were sometimes very hard. Um, screen time for the kids, I always worried that they were. On the computer for too long. Um. And, you know, I didn't always know how to do that better. Um, so, so, so. Trying to balance that, trying to balance time in on the screen. And trying to balance the time that the kids would be off screen was was always a challenge, especially. Once again, with my situation, because I had students, you know, I taught, I I continue doing it concurrently. So, um. Participation, you know, I I was listening to Susan and I was envious of Susan being. And it's probably the, it's probably the age, you know, I teach fifth grade, they're, you know, they're more independent, they're more shy. They're probably, you know, chatting with their friends on the other side and forget about what Señora Soler has to say for now. And then it's like, oh, I'm sorry, it was glitchy. Um, and I I missed that. So. Um, having to to go back and repeat myself and and just like be off, you know, you need to stop chatting. Or, you know, turning those messages, you know, the messaging off. So that. You know, having them like raise their hand and being on camera and seeing them and participating. At at the age of ten and eleven is certainly much more challenging and then, you know. When they're six and seven year olds. Um. Yeah, I I created a great relationship with my parents too. Um, so I needed, they needed my my cellphone. So many of them have it and they texted me. And we're having, you know, so those connections, I visit many of, I visited many of my families. I know the addresses of all of them. Um, I go and drop off books. So, you know, I still do that. So that was, that was good, that that sort of connection. That during the school year would not have happened. I know where they live. I can describe their homes. Um, so it's, it's funny, you know, it's, it's good in that way. So it had a lot of good things. Um, but, you know, challenges too. I don't know what else you need.
No, but nope, just whatever you want us to know, like, and how we can help you guys going forward, like. Yeah, what are the things that you guys learned this year that were good that you will need support in incorporating next year? Or or um, are there any things that you would suggest that we take a look at? Or suggest needs improvement or?
Um, well, I think that we're taking, I think, I I'm very positive, like Susan is saying, you know. I definitely like to see the students in front of me. I think that it's, it's just works better. It's it's the the feedback that we can provide them. Um, many times, you know, that instant feedback is is, it's much better instead of that wait time, like, let me get the assignment and correct and. Um, or, you know, you need to go over this or that. Um, so I'm very, I'm very positive of 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 next, you know, of next year. Um, I think that we have definitely learned a lot of technology and new. Strategies and platforms that we can continue incorporating into into our classrooms. We have also learned that. Too much computer is is really, you know, also not in the best interest of 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 the children or for uh, for us. Uh, too, but I think that we'll continue using, you know, technology and I think that's, you know, that's, that's great. I think that it's provided a platform for more collaborative work. Um.
Maria, when you say too much computer, do you mean computer or screen time?
Screen time, yeah, screen time, yeah. Um, so I'm.
More collaborative, it allows for more collaboration.
It definitely allow, I I mean, I found that to be, uh. I I couldn't replicate exactly what I did years, you know, years past, the same exact, yeah, it's just, it was just very hard. So. So they needed, it was more, my approach was more student centered. So they could really have more conversations um, and help each other out and that worked well. And I think that that will continue happening. So I'm sorry, my dog just heard the garage door. I'm sorry. Um, so, so anything, I I really do think that. Anything that could help us bring more of that collaborative work, you know, that we can incorporate technology. In the classroom with more collaborative work would be, you know, uh, great. I'm always willing to to learn any of, you know, any of that. Um, anything that has to do with more differentiating, we did it, I think that many of us, you know, or most of us. You know, really had to because we had kids who really were challenged with. With with being online. So how can I get this student to to finish the work or to do it different ways? But but we, I don't think that that many of us have like. The training in 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 UD, in in, you know, UDLs. So that would be definitely, you know. More work on that, training on that. I'm.
You said UDL. You. What is? Universal design.
Universal Design Learning.
Okay, there we go. Thank you.
All these acronyms in, uh, you know, in academics, in education. We love it. Um, I think that isolation was a little bit of an issue uh, for many of us. I know it was for me. Um, because I. I I locked myself in in the classroom, so I would come in, even though we were one hundred percent remote. I decided to come into school and teach from there, but I was teaching in in my classroom and I was there and I didn't see many people. Um, issues of, you know, not wanting to 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 too much contact or anything like that. So I think that. It happened to many of us. I would not see my team members until Wednesday. Um, so. Isolation was was an issue that 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 hit us, many of us hard. Um. Hopefully, yeah.
That's great. Thank you so much, Maria. That was really, really helpful. And it's very interesting to hear the differences between. Your experience with the older kids um, than Susan's experience with the younger kids. And it's interesting because I think. A lot of us just assumed that the younger kids would have a harder time with remote and wouldn't manage it well and. You know, wouldn't remain engaged. And um, so far, everything that we've heard that has not really been the case. Like, the younger kids did a lot better with adhering to mask protocol and to engaging, you know, remotely. Um, so, thank you very much. Um, we're running out of time, so I'm gonna let Betty and uh, James speak next. And then I'll go through the school committee members and they can ask questions, okay? So Betty and Jane?
Sure. All right. I think I'm gonna go first. I have uh, just a brief, brief PowerPoint to show you. Here it is. Uh, can I share my screen? Host?
Yeah.
May I ask the host?
Colleen's gonna do that right now.
Okay, thank you. There we are. It's coming up.
Oh, okay.
Not that one. Hold on. Oh, okay, maybe you can see it. I'm not used to this platform. Does it say twenty twenty, twenty one?
Yeah.
What have we learned? Okay, good. All right. My name's James Tretor. I teach French and Spanish at Maynard High School. What have we learned? And I, I'll be brief because I think I may end up repeating some uh, notions that were mentioned previously. Resilience and flexibility were key and I saw that with so many of my coworkers and. Um, one, one thing that I really appreciated actually was that we were allowed the flexibility. Um, one thing I really like about working at Maynard High School is that there's a trust level with the teachers. And it's really appreciated. I really appreciate it. My coworkers really appreciate. Uh, the manner in which we are managed, all right? We're not micromanaged and and that's. I I we, I really wanna recognize that because um. Administration at the high school level really understands that we, for the most part, know our subjects, all right? That's why we're there. And that, you know, we, for the most part, know the best way in which to teach it. Um, now. This year was obviously very different. Um, another takeaway was that face-to-face education is essential. For me, um, that's, that's one of my takeaways. Um. Just, just seeing it, seeing it, you know, how difficult it was for students. Isolation was mentioned before, isolation for students and isolation for for teachers. Um, although we don't show it, that's the other thing. Um, it was very difficult for students. And also, remote teaching presented many challenges. Um. It's, you know, there were, there were times I can, I can recall where something that would take one minute in a classroom. Would take thirty minutes, you know, in remote. Um, so. And then, you know, can't do things a certain way, have to do it a different way, can't do, you know, standard tests. Which, you know, isn't necessarily a bad thing, but um, it, you know, it was a continuous reinventing of the wheel. So, I mean, it was, it was a lot to say that. Uh, another thing. Um, that was difficult and really this was beyond anybody's control was frequent schedule changes and and mode changes. All right, made things difficult um, throughout the year because, you know, like anybody, teachers really appreciate routine. And students really appreciate routine. Um, so it was, it was tough, especially there, you know, there's. You know, a certain percentage of students who, you know, are the C students, let's say, all right? And our challenge is to really teach to them and of course, everybody else. But uh, for for those kind of students, constant schedule changes, not constant, but frequent schedule changes. Made things difficult um, for them. And I'll say that recently, we s- we, at the high school. We switched to um, all classes in the same order every day. So would, nobody really has to think about it. And that's tough on teachers, really, frankly. Uh, I don't wish that on anybody, but on the other hand. Students then knew what to expect. This is what happened a few, you know, about two months ago or so. Uh, I'm really glad. That we're gonna be going back to the, our original schedule. Next year, okay, someone was trying to enter the meeting, but um, anyway, I'll, I'll give the control back after. Um, so I really appreciate that we're going back to the usual schedule, all right, that we had pre-COVID. Uh, that, just having, you know, one class drop a day for us. I have five different classes, so five different preps every day, uh, which is unusual, but. I understand it because I teach French, so there's different levels. Uh, just having four instead of five per day. Just helps my head to not spin as much, as much as possible. Um, so I'm very happy that we're going back to the original schedule. Um, we talked with the school counselors and and they're concerned frankly about uh, school phobia and anxiety in the fall. Among students who have been remote the whole time. I can't even imagine what it's like to be a counselor during this time. Um, and a lot of them have had their trial by fire and um. That's something that they're gonna have to deal with, anxiety, just being around people again, uh, you know, students that were fully remote. So that's just something else I wanted to mention. And then, you know, just to segue, number two and number three are really similar, actually. I've found and I think most people have found that face-to-face interactions are actually essential. Um, I'll give you a little anecdote of mine. Uh, I took a couple of classes online. This is about seven or eight years ago, uh, at a local university and, you know, going, taking. Something away from those classes that I took, they were grad classes. Um, they were, they were fine. Their content was there. And and, you know, I felt like I I learned something, but there, there was something that was missing. And I remember walking on campus, this is at Framingham State, when I was taking face-to-face classes. The, you know, the semester after that, and I said to myself, wow, I wouldn't even recognize my professor. If I crossed her on this campus. So, you know, and that was, that was mostly asynchronous, so that was a different thing. So I knew going into this type of learning that, yeah, screen, if we're doing remote, screen face-to-face has to happen. In order for some kind of interaction uh, to, to be beneficial. Uh, one thing that helped, I'll I'll move things along here, uh, we incorporated our advisories into remote learning. Uh, maybe about halfway through the year and then we're continuing with them right now. Those helped a great deal, I'll say. Um, my advisory is LGBTQ history. I'm not a history teacher, but I know a thing or two about LGBTQ history. And uh, just to, just to, um, how can I? Just to explain that, you know, social interactions among human beings are absolutely essential, period. All right, but for LGBTQ youth. It's beyond essential, like they need to see representation, they need to know that there are other people out there. When they're at home and, you know, on the screen, okay, what are they don't, okay, there's no one necessarily real in their lives. Uh, that they see. So I really appreciate the time to have the advisories. Um, whether it's remote or in person and uh, tho- those have gone very well. So. Anyway, I'll leave it there. I don't know if anyone has any questions or I could, I could just hand it over to Betty.
I think we should move on to Betty and then.
Absolutely.
Get to the um, school committee.
Sure.
I'll try to um, keep it brief just because I, I spoke to James before it, so we were kind of on the same page on a lot of the stuff. Um, for those who don't know me, I just realized my last name does not appear. Um, I'm Betty McAvaz and I am the math teacher at the high school. I'm also the junior class advisor. So what I will say is this year was far from ideal. I think we can all agree on that, but I can also agree on the fact that we've tried our best. I think we were able to have prom. We were able to have sports. We were about to have. We were able to have sports. We were about to have, we're about to have graduation, so I think it's different. They're gonna remember it, but I think we're still have positive things that we have done this year. I will say that I am a little concerned that when we were remote, it was very hard to read the room unless the student spoke up. It was very hard to know how they're doing. I know the guidance counselors have reached out to parents, to families, and sometimes you don't hear back. So it's nearly impossible to know unless they speak up. So, that is something that was concerning when we were fully remote. I'm particularly concerned about the freshmen because of the transition. So for the freshmen that were fully remote, they don't have the connections that some kids already have with us. So I was lucky enough to have students that have had freshman year that are now in their junior year and senior year. But I think in most cases, those kids have never seen some of those teachers. So I'm, I'm concerned about how next year is go, is gonna be for them, but I'm positive. I think our staff is strong enough. They're gonna try to figure out connections. They're gonna make their best out of it, but I am concerned about the freshmen. What I really, really liked about this year was the Wednesdays. I think it gave us an opportunity to talk. We had the BBST committee and we were talking a lot about students who are struggling. We were coming up with interventions and I think it's been helpful for them. But I will definitely agree with James and say that face-to-face interactions definitely has been more positive for our students overall. I will say, Google Classroom, I think, really helped me with my filing. I think it's the best filing I have ever done. Everything is in one place. Kids know how to access it. I definitely will probably still keep the same structure I have now for next year as well in terms of filing, having the forms, having all the notes, because I do think it's beneficial for students. And I think that's all I have to say. Actually, I do have to add one thing. We, the one thing that I'm actually very grateful about this year is the amount of communications that we had, both with our administrators and Superintendent Haas, is the fact that we were able to have a transparent meeting, have consistent feedback, consistent updates. I really appreciated it. I knew exactly what was going on and I am grateful for that. So I really hope that for next year, we're able to do that as well, probably not as frequent, but still have district meetings and conversations.
That's good to hear. That's great to know. And I'm, I, I'm sure that that level of communication can be maintained and supported going forward because that's, you know, one of our district goals and it's the school committee's goal and it just makes everyone's life so much easier and better. And so thank you for, for mentioning that. That's really great.
Sorry, if I could just jump in for one second, just a side note. I don't know if something got switched to me for like administering the, this meet, but I see the people are in the waiting room. I don't know if I have to release that or...
I'm, I'm not sure if I can take it back. I will try, but you don't have to.
Does he need to give it back to you?
He might need to give it back.
Yeah.
So if you go to participants and you go to Colleen, you can, there's like
Okay.
and you can make sure the host.
I will. I will do that.
I'm glad you know that, Bethland.
Zoom is my life.
So it sounds like, and I know, we've heard a little bit from the students, and it sounds like it was high school, the high school students and the high school staff had a really, really rough go of it. And I know that your schedule of all of them was the most complicated because kids switch for every class and there are so many different layers and so many, you know, different levels of, say, math or whatnot and, and the AP classes. And so I, I really appreciate how much work you guys put into just trying to keep it together and, and supporting the students. And I have heard from a lot of the students that this was a really tough year for them. I mean, this is the age where your peers are the most important people to you in your, you know, and to be stuck at home with your parents is probably the last thing in the world you want or need even. So, thank you very much for all of this input. What can we do? What can the school committee do to help support you and the students next year? And James is muted again.
I don't mind going first. I think advisories have been great, so if we can keep those. I think, I know this year, a lot of teachers for the advisors actually spent their own money on tools and I know there's like rock painting and stuff like that, the kids really were involved in and really liked. So I think if we keep advisories, I think that'll be a good way to know your teacher outside the classroom too, because we do have hobbies and we are human. And I think seeing that side of us is actually beneficial for them. So personally, I think if we can keep advisories, that'll be
So that's actually, that's an SEL, SEL tool or activity that we can incorporate and have Esser funds for possibly. So anyway, I think, I think that's a really good, that's a really good suggestion. Because, you know, um, do any of us, none of us has a high school child this year. So, I'm, meaning the school committee. So I think we are most detached from what you guys went through. We, we know GM and we know Fowler, but we don't know the high school. So the more input we can get from you, the better. And that's really helpful to know, because they don't have advisories in the other two schools. And I wouldn't actually have even known about the advisories if it hadn't been for one of our students' reps who came and told us about it, you know, a few meetings ago and talked about how helpful those advisories and how it really improved morale and, and increased relationships between students and teachers. So, so any more suggestions or advice like that is very helpful. And then I'm going to move on to Jessica.
Sorry, I was taking notes here. I will say I have, so I don't have a child at the high school, but I have a nephew who's actually outside my window for some reason right now, who is at the high school. And I did get to sit in, just again, the classroom, being in your living room all the time. Well, he was taking an advisory at our house one day and it was, it was phenomenal. It was great to kind of like listen in and be a part of that. And it was great, because again, I had no idea that they were even incorporating those. So then after, as soon as he ended, you know, I was quizzing him and, and it was such a great idea and something fabulous that was incorporated into the school year. So I applaud who's ever enacted that and who's implemented it. So thank you for that. And then just thinking about, you know, building a support team and getting like the, the student recovery programs over the summer and whatnot. Just, it's not really a question, but being more making sure we're also incorporating the social emotional piece into that, that it's not just about the academic loss, that it's also about that social emotional peer loss experiences, you know, food insecurities, all of those things that we as a district and community should also be responsible for, making sure that we're talking about those and that we're giving, I want to make sure we're giving teachers and staff the time to discuss between each other, because I think one teacher might see something that somebody else hasn't and feel, looping each other in and just making sure that we're, we're giving that, that space and that open communication will be so important to get ahead of this for next year, so we're not playing catch-up in the fall and, and just staying on top of that. But thank you so much for, to all of you for your time and coming tonight to, to fill us in and already crazy hectic year. We really great, great to hear from all of you firsthand. And I appreciate the honesty and the, the candid, you know, retells and, and feedback that you all shared. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna move on to Bethland. We are two minutes over, so let's just be cognizant. I'm not gonna cut anyone off, but if the rest of the SC could be cognizant of our time limit, that would be great.
Yeah, I don't wanna keep the teachers here any longer either than we need to. I just wanna highlight a few things that we've really been living, but has been a concept for a while about growth mindset for education. And we've talked about this for a bunch of years in the district and we've had to live it. And, and and when you get really real with that, there are moments when it's really hard and challenging. Growth isn't always an easy thing, but that flexibility and, and focusing on that resilient piece and hearing that's for, this is an experience we've all gone through together. And that's one of the things that the resilience piece and what you're speaking to. So when I hear that, I also think about, you've all had to go above and beyond. There's no other option. And James talked about the continuous reinventing of the wheel. So I, I just hope that there can be an opportunity too, that seems like that, any, any chance we can do. I don't know if there is any mirroring of advisories possible, even with a schedule at Fowler, but something where we're able to continue that social foundational, like social connection. I think it's gonna be just as important for you as teachers, the beginning of next year and through the summer, having those moments to rejuvenate and recharge. And I don't know what that looks like, what to think about that for how the district can support too, because that's or we've all experienced this. And so I, I'm just beyond grateful for what you've come through. So thank you. And I just want to mention that to think about as you think about what support looks like. And I noticed that one thing was having the opportunities and space. And I don't know that, obviously, I don't know, we're continuing with any remote Wednesdays, but that space, everyone spoke about the team being able to meet and consider data, consider intervention, talk together. And I think that's gonna be just as essential for everyone next year. So I just wanted to mention what I hear you saying, and thank you for being here and for talking with us.
Thank you. Natasha? She's muted. Should we skip her? No, just kidding.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm so used to muting during the day for my meetings at work that I, out of habit, keep muting myself here and I realize I can't unmute myself, so I apologize. So I just wanted to appreciate the vulnerability that each of you has really shared in, in your, through your lens and your experience and how you're engaging. Maria, I mean, you, you've, I know in our year before COVID, you've been very big support from, for my family. So I know you said this year you've gotten to know families because of COVID. I can say that you've always done that. And I know from firsthand, I appreciate the work and the commitment that each of you has for your students. And I was almost tearing up because I know how hard it is to have that brave face when each of you are having your own emotional uncertainty and then face a class of little, little folks or big folks who are very emotional themselves, who rely on stability and an adult in their presence to get them through their uncertainty. And that's not an easy task for parents to do. I know myself included, I don't do that well. And so I really know and appreciate that dedication to your, your job, the, but that, that comes from a place of just loving what you do. And I appreciate that on, on so many levels. It can't really be understated, the social emotional impact all this has had on teachers as well. And I want to make sure that's part of the conversation is that as we're talking about transitioning students back and whatnot, social emotional evolution for the staff is, is something that needs to continuously be part of the conversation as well. You know, we're talking about transitions. I've heard just little bits of pieces of your, you know, what each of you have said, transitions, counselors being concerned about the anxiety and school phobia. I think that's a huge issue of twenty, twenty percent of the population of students will be returning next year. And, and so that's, that's a big, a big thing. And, and I, I don't have the answer to it, but I know it's a very real concern and I appreciate you highlighting and that everyone's being thoughtful and how that's gonna be addressed. But I also know that's stressful for, for staff, because when you see a kid who's dysregulated or, you know, anxious and you wanna help them. And, and so having the resources there, I wanna make sure that we are able to provide the resources that you need to, to be able to support those kids in whatever capacity that they need. And, and just that, James, you, you mentioned it very, that the human humanity, we, we need, we need engagement. We, we need person-to-person. And I think that there's only so much you can do remote. I think that interaction, especially with our vulnerable population who really need to identify and have that resource, those advisory groups. I've also heard how essential those have been. And to be honest, we're talking about needing to build relationships with students better. I think those advisory groups are key for that, because that is kind of a safety net where you would be able to catch and see where some of those issues may be arising. That might not be so obvious in a larger classroom. So I, I really appreciate all the work that everyone's doing. And then it's not over, then everyone's counting down the days, the minutes until school's over. And I, but thank you so much for, for everything. And I, I, we have such a wonderful, wonderful group of people here. I also just wanted to make sure that the communication, I appreciate you highlighting that those district meetings have been great. And so I know Brian's listening, so I appreciate that that has been something that we continuously can work on, because that is important for us to have those takeaways. What has been working and how can we continue that collaborative work? And also recognize the competence that staff have built on their new skills and with technology, because that's no easy feat. It's like a surgeon trying to read, learn how to do a new procedure, you know, and, and like, that's just, that's kind of a level. It's like relearning your job. And so I appreciate that, that, that big undertaking that has happened. And I, I hope that we can continue to leverage it. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Mary?
Sure. So a couple of things that, from the high school presentation, the advisories have actually been going on for a few years. And I only know because they started as a pilot with the Maynard Education Foundation. And I really, I do think that we, the whole idea of the Maynard Education Foundation is to pilot programs that then the budget takes over. And when I think about the short money that teachers were asking for, they should not be taking that money out of their pocket. So we need to find a way, sounds loud and clear, like those were a huge piece of, of it. And I really like Bethland's idea of bringing it down to the Fowler School too. Another great thing that I heard from the high school, from the kids anyway, kids that I know, was being able to actually have the same in-person and remote days as like their friends, as some, some of their friends, so that they were able to study together on the remote days and actually going to school together. That really helped them get through this, this past year. So I really appreciate, I, I know Chuck is listening and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of, of really allowing that, that piece to happen. So, and then just in general, just a huge thank you to everyone. Tonight's been really, really informational. I think one of the main words that came out of it is the resilience of everybody on the part of the teachers, the nurses, the guidance counselors, the administrators, the students. It's just been a heck of a year.
Yep. Uh-oh, we lost you, Mary, again, your, your voice.
Yep, Mary, we can hear you again.
Oh, and now you're frozen. Oh, no, okay.
All right. Are you good, Mary? Mary?
Oh, I hate it. I hate this. Yes, I am. Anyway, thank you.
All right. Now we can hear you. All right. Thank you. So Susan and Maria and James and Betty, thank you so much. This was really, really important. We've been looking forward to this for a while. And I'm really glad that you were able to take time tonight to tell us about this and your experiences and what was good and what was bad, because, you know, we aren't on the ground day-to-day like you are. And we only usually get feedback from parents. And it's not always very nice. And so it's good to hear, you know, from your side. And it was also really nice to hear some positive things too. So thank you very, very much. And please continue to, you know, communicate ideas of ways that you can be supported going forward.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
You're welcome.
Good night.
So we are now gonna move on to the fresh, I believe it's the fresh picks, yes, service update. And I see that we have a Chris with us. And is it Heather?
Maybe I can help you with this.
Oh, thank you. Wayne, you introduce them.
Yes, as most of you know, the Fresh Picks is our food service vendor that we have. And Heather Shastany is our food service director. And she is accompanied tonight by Chris Farrell and John Peters. And so I will turn it over to them. What I asked them to do was just put together a couple of slides to kind of highlight what they have done during the past school year and in general, what the plan is for next year. Go ahead.
Hi, it's Heather. I don't know. I think I'm unmuted.
Yeah.
Perfect. So we prepared a little PowerPoint and I don't know if Colleen can pull that up at the same time for us. Let's see. Is that coming up, Colleen?
Should be seeing it now.
Yep. Does it go into like slideshow presentation mode or just this? Awesome. Perfect. Thank you very much, Colleen. So I also, I just wanted to start off by thanking Brian for his very nice comments at the beginning of the meeting. I have a fabulous group of staff who are, many of them are Maynard mothers, who they come to work each day. They talk about their kids doing online or in-person schooling. And they have been fabulous at coming in and working through all the changes. And I just greatly appreciate your nice words and I will repeat them tomorrow for those ladies. So Wayne had asked us to put together something about what we did this school year and then moving forward. So if you want to go ahead, Colleen. So we started mid-September and from September to the end of May, we have sold, I'm using the term sold very loosely, we have put out 47,000 lunches between that timeframe. And in addition to that, we have also put out 43,000 breakfasts. We have done that by doing food in-house to those who are learning in-house. And we have done deliveries throughout the community. And we do that Monday, Wednesday and Friday. And that will be continuing until the Wednesday of the 16th. So with that, we've been able to reach a large population of Maynard residents. We've also seen some residents that don't have kids actively in school yet. But they will be coming to Green Meadow in the future. The district has been great with working with us to get us different delivery sites around town, working with us and Ericsson's when they didn't have their parking lot, to Roadwork. So it's been fabulous. Also, at the beginning of the process, we were in communication with the Board of Health, going over COVID regulations on food service, which was a significant change to what we do regularly. And then the Board of Health came in for our typical annual inspection. And we had very positive remarks from her. One being we had been putting out frozen food to some of those students who remained remote as a food safety technique. And she was very happy to see that. It also helped us give families something that if they weren't intending to use it right away, they could put away for later. We had Eliza in the business office, who has been a great asset to us as well, put out a survey to all of the parents. And we got very good feedback on what we were doing. So it just helped to confirm that we were on the right track. In terms of financially, we are looking to be netting in the positive, which is a fabulous thing for being in a pandemic. Most of the surrounding towns are financially a little more in flux, which is something you would hear if you were taking part in a food service webinar or something of that sort. So for us to be trending for a profit is a huge thing for us. And it actually is Maynard's profit. We simply operate out of your budget. So that is a fabulous thing that I can tell you tonight. Colleen, if you want to keep going. Part of why we are trending so well financially is we have been utilizing the Department of Defense's Favors Program, which is offered to many school districts. And we get fresh fruit and vegetables through the DOD. And we can put some of our entitlement money, which is viewed as a gift card into these items. So we get to supplement our food cost. So in these pictures, you get to see what some of our in-house lunches were from buffalo chicken salads to sandwiches to the high school kids absolutely love strawberry parfaits. So this has been a huge piece of our success using those free products and also having a variety of things to offer. So I am going to pass it on to John, who is the regional manager. And he will discuss next year's plans.
How are we doing, everybody? Appreciate your time. So yeah, some of the, the changes that we'll be making, we will be ceasing the remote meal service over the summer. And we will continue that next year, but that will just be for pickup instead of doing the deliveries like we've been doing this particular year. And we're going to open all the kitchens. We've been operating out of that one kitchen, as pointed out in Fowler, and looking to open up the elementary school and high schools, which is really exciting when you want, want to get those service lines open and get things up to as normal as possible and get it set up the way the students were used to. I think they'll be really excited about it. You know, and we're going to do the best we can, you know, continuing to look at all the ever-changing protocols that come out. So we will open up basically as much as we, we possibly can, whatever those current restrictions or regulations will be come the beginning of the year. Another thing we're looking to do is to market additional entries that students can purchase at a lower cost. That's to fill a need for students, especially at the high school that are looking for a little bit more than what, you know, the, the minimum requirements from the USDA provide. We want to make sure that we're looking at the speed of service too, as we go into the school year. Because we'll be operating under an SSO, a seamless summer option through the USDA, which is offered, you know, to the whole country right now, all the way through the next school year. We won't have to necessarily identify all the students. So we'll be able to have express lines where we can to get students in and out as best as possible. So that's something we'll be working on next year as well. And right now, we're currently evaluating the Green Meadow facility. For any sort of equipment upgrades that we could possibly do, you know, the, the older service line looking at and any sort of equipment we possibly could bring in to help the production that's going on over there at Green Meadow. And, you know, lastly, I just, I just want to say how proud I am of Heather and her team as a, as the district manager. They've done an unbelievable job, gone through a lot of ups and downs, and they really made it happen. Great group of people. And you can really tell that they love serving kids. And that's pretty much all I have.
Right. And I actually, I want to jump in with one more thing on that, because I realized as I was looking at the slides, we didn't make it clear because we've known for months and been ecstatic about it. But I just want to make sure that the school board knows that the seamless summer option program that John was talking about allows your school district to continue to serve all kids for free in the next school year.
Great. Awesome. Thank you for sharing that.
Okay. Um, so I am going to go through and start with Jessica, who is muted. I just have a quick question while she's being unmuted. The, the images of the food that you showed, is that typical high school food? Or is that high school and middle school food? Or is that all three schools?
So those items go to all three schools. The image that had a assortment with the milk at the bottom is the high school refrigerator. However, all the food goes everywhere.
Okay, great.
I don't think that I have, oh, I, the one question I would have is, um, in terms of looking at the equipment updating, are we taking into account making sure that equipment could be transferred to new buildings? When we get the new Green Meadow, to make sure that's not like a wasted cost?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we've actually, when I was helping John and Heather prepare the slideshow, we talked about that. We did that exact same thing in the town I live in, in Dover. When we went into their high school, which was 50 years old and about falling down, we made some improvements, knowing they were building a new building. And it took six years after we came in, but 80 to 85% of that equipment went over to the new building.
Great. Thank you. Beth Lynn.
Uh, I guess just first, thank you for reading what you've all been doing. When you, I'm seeing it, it's very impressive. When you talk about some of the, the changes for Green Meadow, I'm just wondering what, I appreciate that you're looking at that, because I think it's particularly for the younger set, they just are gonna, it's harder for them to sit and eat. And it's, I found that it's actually really jarring all around, just to go to that. We constantly had problems with my kids are smaller with them actually getting food into their bodies when they were in the school. And then it creates behavior issues. So I guess my point is, I'm just curious about what you're seeing in your assessment and, and if you, what you're doing to try to consider shifting that, because I think that's a very important and fruitful activity. I was curious about it.
So I'll speak to the equipment part, because that's really my part. You know, we, when we came into the district just almost about three years ago now, you know, we knew that the Green Meadow facility was challenged, to put it, you know, bluntly. You know, Heather and her team over the first year and a half that we were here were very successful in producing more food on site, even though I'm pretty sure, and I talked to the principal about it, he agreed with me, that kitchen that they work out of was probably the locker room at some point in that building's history. So, you know, Heather and her team have done a tremendous job of creating more foods on site there, because whenever you can create fresh in the facility, you can get a better quality than even just satelliteing from the next building over. So really what we're going to be looking at is what kind of changes we can make to help them facilitate producing even more onsite, you know, to try and keep improving that quality. That's the major thing we're looking at. We're also looking at the service line too, but because, you know, it's an old converted, looks like a gymnasium, you know, with a line that's just set up there. The fact that they are younger kids and the fact that the building's not going to be used that way forever, there's going to be a new building. We're more focused on what we can do to really improve that food quality during production, with maybe some thought to how we can possibly improve that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Though, to be fair, it may be 10 years before we get a new building. So just to say, anything you can figure out for a food service line would be great too. But I think food quality is a fair thing. I mean, we've been hearing about some of that. And I think that that, to see what you can do, I think that that is a high priority for families, particularly for the younger kids. We can see what you're able to do at the high school. And I know not all kids are going to have salads when they're six or their, but nonetheless, so thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, you know, but some of those things like, you know, being able to do more smoothies or present those better, that kind of stuff. And the yogurt parfaits, which are extremely popular with the high school, we find they work at a lot of elementaries as well. You know, we'll be looking at all of that, just how can we produce this stuff better here? And are there anywhere better ways to present it online?
Yeah. And we appreciate hearing about that as you go, because I know that that's something that families do care about for their, for their kiddos. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Natasha?
Um, thank you very much. I, I, the, I know the staff worked tirelessly with, or years ago, I used to work in food service. My husband's a chef, so I know food service is really, really hard job. And it comes with pitfalls and it's not always appreciated for the, the behind the scenes, more efforts that go into that. So actually, I used to work with Matt Pierce. So I know, yeah, so we've had stories. So, but I just wanted to, so I just, I thank you, because I know that they're making deliveries. I was able to speak to some of the staff at Fowler. And I know they were going through their own hardships, but they were still showing up and working and putting these foods together for, for people and, and being present as well. So please, so much appreciation there. I did have a couple of questions about, you're talking about the kitchen equipment, and I don't know if this is relevant or not, but I don't know if there are upgrades for kitchen equipment, if that counts towards the maintenance of the building. I know kitchen equipment is quite expensive. And in consideration for the threshold that we need to maintain for the building at Green Meadow, the 30%, I just want to make sure that we're just being mindful of how much we're investing in maintenance of expense and how we're just keeping that in our sight. But we're not inadvertently putting ourselves over some, that three-year window of spending too much on maintenance in that building. And I don't even know if this type of maintenance would count towards that. So that might be the first part, kitchen equipment. But if it does, I just want to make sure that we're just keeping that in the back of our minds as well. And the transition years, I know we talked about this before, in particular, kids that are transitioning from Green Meadow to Fowler, it's always kind of a shock to, to parents and to kids, because they have all these choices of things they can buy. And I think a lot of times, you, you know, parents see these expenses happening that they're not used to seeing at Green Meadow, because it was more controlled with offerings, because you have the ability to have more offerings at Green Meadow when you're serving food and they can buy drinks and all these other things, cookies, ice cream, all this stuff that never really was as available at the elementary school. So I just want to make sure that we had talked about giving parents kind of a heads up in those transition years. Since fourth grade, current fourth grade hasn't really experienced a full food service. I just want to make sure that next year's fifth graders and next year's fourth graders, that we can give them understanding of what their kids would be experiencing different for food service offerings that is, would be from, from what they've experienced in the past at, at Green Meadow. And just to kind of prepare and how if there's questions, you know, to communicate how they would go about communicating, you know, with that. And then the other question I had, can you expand a little bit? I heard you mention about extra food at a subsidized price. Can you confirm a little bit, is that meaning where if someone's still hungry, that we would offer like a little, like a small meal? Is that what, is that what I was hearing or?
So really what it is, is with all the main meals being free now. So, you know, you can go in and the meal that you used to pay the full meal price for, you know, before the pandemic, you'll now be able to get for free. And this is going to be more focused, you know, somewhat at Fowler, but really at the high school where some of the feedback has been portion size. And we've had struggles with, you know, working within the regulations. You know, the extra items you're talking about it like Fowler and the high school, à la carte items. You know, a lot of times that's focused on, you know, packaged snacks and that kind of stuff. What we're looking at for the upcoming year is being able to take advantage of these meals being free. And basically now, you know, those high school kids that feel the portions aren't big enough, are going to be able to get a bigger meal. are gonna be able to get a bigger meal for less than one, you know, the regular meal would have cost before. So, you know, a great example is we typically do a six-inch sub at the deli as part of that reimbursable meal, is what we call it. Uh, because that fits into the regulations. You could now say, okay, you can make that a twelve-inch sub for an extra two dollars and two dollars and fifty cents, or however it works out. And that's kind of what we were talking about. When you talk about those extras, the à la carte items, that's really where we're gonna be focusing our market, our marketing next year, is encouraging kids to get that bigger meal, especially at the high school level. Because that's one of the pieces of feedback we've had, not only in Maynard, but in a lot of other school districts with the portion sizes. And now we can actually do something about it.
Okay, no, that was helpful. So the basic meals, the portion, which is, you have certain amount that's subsidized, that will be at no cost. And what we're saying is that the above, like a half of that meal, which won't have to be, it could be à la carte if they wanted to purchase those separately. But I, I just don't want that to be the extra option only if they want, is the sugary stuff. I want, you know, more like hot meal offering. And it sounds like they would be able to gain from a hot meal, extra piece of a sub. Or you said, you said, mentioned about salad. I don't know if that's something, um, that would be also, would that be part of, um, I heard somebody earlier mentioned some of that salad, would that be part of that option for extra? If someone wanted to add a salad to their meal?
So, um, salads are, salads, they can add to a meal now or before, um, without adding cost to their meal. It's still included in their meal. Uh, last time we were here, I talked about, you know, the USDA and the way they structured the portion sizes.
Right.
You can get up to a cup of fruit or vegetable or just vegetables. So they could technically get two cups of salad with, you know, the hot meal or slice of pizza or whatever. Um, and that's included in that reimbursable meal. Um, so they can already take extra fruits and vegetables with, you know, the, when we're doing a turkey dinner or the six-inch sub or any of that, they can already take two cups worth of fruits and vegetables. Um, so, you know, that's already there. We're talking more what exactly you were talking about, focusing our marketing rather on, rather than on sugary stuff or anything like that. Focusing our marketing on, hey, if you want more food, get an extra portion of turkey. Turn your six-inch sub into a twelve-inch sub. Get the real food.
And then the last thing was about the breakfast. I know that has been our last presentation. There were some, I guess, different, um, more surprise about what is considered a breakfast or what passes as a breakfast by the USDA and, and what we would prefer to be more of a healthier offering. How is that being considered into your new plan for next year? Or is it?
So, um, you know, in terms of, and I'm trying to recall all the details from that last.
It was like a donut, you know, I know donuts sometimes were one of the breakfast offerings, um, more again sugary kind of content things.
Yeah, and the USDA regulations haven't really changed around that. Um, you know, we still, the breakfast component is two grains and we have to offer one grain. And then, once we've offered a grain, we can offer a protein with it. So when we do those fruit and yogurt parfaits for breakfast, technically the entree is the granola that goes with it. And then we're allowed to serve the yogurt. Um, so, you know, there, I think we had talked about, you know, focusing more on some of those combo items where it's got the meat, meat alternate and the grain, um, in the menus. Um, Heather may have already started this year and, you know, we'll continue that into next year as well.
Thank you.
Mary?
Um, so the other day I was, um, at Fowler and I noticed, um, in their hallway that they had a refrigerator with, and there was food and drink and it said, take, you know, take it, um, the breakfast food. Is that something that's, that's ongoing that's also at Green Meadow and also at the high school? Cause I thought it was really cool.
So at the high school, they have a similar setup at, in their lobby. They have a breakfast fridge and the lunch. And that will be until the end of this year. And starting next year, we hope to go back to our normal pre-pandemic service. Um, and then at Green Meadow, the pre-K teachers were coming to the calf in the morning and grabbing what they needed for breakfast. And then some students would come early to school in Green Meadow and get what they needed from the staff members there. Um, and then similarly at lunch at Green Meadow, they would be offered, um, I, it's usually one or two choices per day.
Thank you. I really, I thought that was great. The other, and my other question is, we're talking about the free meals for the kids and that. Um, of course, I always worry about the stigmatism having to do with that. Um, you know, so how will the kids that need the free meals, um, get them? Uh, you know, just go through the line and just not be, um, you know, I.
Everybody, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
So everybody's gonna get free meals?
Yeah.
Correct. Every, for the rest, for, for all next school year?
Yeah. And I can also tell you that, um, Bernie Sanders has introduced legislation to try and make this universal meals program permanent.
Wow.
This is like Oprah, like you get a car and you get a car and you get a car.
Incredible. That's amazing. We were talking about costs and that, so, but yeah, thank you very much.
Um, just one quick last thing, can you explain the seamless summer? Who is eligible and how, like, is it only kids coming into the school for school programs? Or is it anyone within the district, um, who needs lunch over the summer can come and pick it up?
But, so we're, uh, go ahead, you go Heather, go ahead.
So seamless summer, I'm gonna kind of take the name away. Because the summer piece they threw in there and that gets people kind of stuck. Basically, the whole school year was under that model. So basically, moving forward, it will still be free. And anybody under the age of eighteen can eat.
Okay, even over the summer?
In our facility, we are not doing a summer program.
Okay, all right, that's, that's what I needed clarity on. So, so it's stopping at the end of the school year and it will restart in the fall.
Yes, however, if there are any families that do have a, a need for food, they can go to their nearest program. I believe Project Bread has a search engine. For instance, Marlboro is likely having a summer program. And they could go to Marlboro, no questions asked, and pick up food for their family.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And, um, all right. Perhaps we can put that information on the website at some point.
I was gonna say, Acton had a similar thing. I wonder if they're gonna continue it. It'd be interesting for us, because we were at the food pantry, we were making people aware of it. So maybe I can check and see, um, if they're gonna continue.
All right. Well, thank you very much for being here and, um, I think for a couple of you for being here again. This was very informative and, and we really appreciate it. And thank you for helping us to support our student. Yes, Natasha?
I saw, it looked like Wayne was, had a question or something, and then he's, now he has a thinking face. I don't know if he had something to add.
No, I just wanted to, it got cleared up. I just wanted to make it clear that we will not be, uh, distributing meals during the summer. So, I just wanna make that clear.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you. So thank you again for being here. Um, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks.
Um, yeah. Next, we have before and after school care program presentation, um, Basic.
Well, I can introduce them again.
I'm sorry?
I said, I can introduce them again if you want.
You introduce them again. I just wanted to say, thank you for hanging around, waiting.
So there's Andrew.
To do this.
Absolutely. I see Andrew, he's on the center of the screen. Colleen, un, unmuting, um, Andrew Mountford, who's the executive director, um, again, of Basic, the, uh, the Belmont After School Enrichment Collaborative. We've had, as I've said before, we had, we've had several meetings and have enjoyed working collaboratively with them. They've come and visited and this is really the opportunity for Andrew to sort of just explain in, in more detail than I, I just sort of hinted about it. I didn't want to steal your thunder, but we are excited to work with you. It's, you know, it's definitely a need for our community and we're excited about what you have as a program to offer to, for our students and our families. So, off to you, Andrew.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you for the introduction. Um, yes, I'm Andrew Mountford. I'm the founder and executive director of Basic. I have two colleagues with me that I'd like to introduce, um, Annie Gladfelter, who is our director of impact, and Danielle Green, who is our director of student programming at our middle school program in Belmont. Um, I, uh, also want to mention that she is a Maynard resident with two children currently in the MPS system and, um, a third future tiger a few years away. Um, so kind of a foot in both, um, in, in, in both sides, uh, tonight. And, uh, Annie and Danielle have, um, been part of our, our three-person team to, to work on, on this project over the past month. Uh, before I really get started in talking about Basic, I, I'd really like to thank Brian and Wayne and Colleen. Um, they have been extremely helpful and supportive in this process. I have worked in and with public schools for two decades. And I have to say, I'm very impressed with their knowledge, their clear communication style. It did not surprise me at all to hear folks referencing tonight, meetings they've had throughout the school year and how helpful those have been. Um, and really their understanding of community need. Um, it's, it's only been about a month, but we're building a partnership. And, and that's what we strive to do as an organization. And they've demonstrated from the start that they understand and are willing to work to develop community partnerships for the students and families of Maynard. So thank you, uh, to the three of you for, for your work so far. Um, well, I'm here to introduce our org, uh, introduce you to our organization. Uh, we founded Basic in two thousand and ten. We're coming up on our eleventh anniversary this summer. Uh, as an organization that could deliver positive learning experiences and those all-important out-of-school time hours. Um, a bit of personal background, before founding Basic, I was the director of a small before and after-school program, which is our current Burbank site in Belmont. Uh, and over the course of about seven years, we built a program with facets crucial to positive physical, cognitive, social, emotional development. And we knew that we could take this model and create an organization that was built to scale up and impact more children and families. We founded Basic as a five oh one C three nonprofit and slowly added sites throughout Belmont. We operated before and after-school program at the elementary level, an after-school for middle school students, a high school executive function coaching and homework support center. We run vacation programs in February and April, as well as summer camps that span ten weeks of the summer, that even include extended school year, uh, inclusion programs. We've operated sports leagues as well as comprehensive workshop sessions. Uh, during the pandemic, we had to make a major pivot, as many organizations did. Um, and we first pivoted to providing virtual online workshops, which, um, starting, um, in early April, within three weeks of, of our closure, uh, we had scaled those up to offering a hundred workshops per week by June, uh, two thousand and twenty. Uh, over the summer, we added backyard programs where we met with small groups of students with a couple of teachers, uh, during the summer months at families' homes. And then finally, we launched a remote learning pod program. We were the first actually to be certified in the Commonwealth EEC District Three, um, following the governor's announcement of a state licensing exemption, uh, last August. And we offered over thirty of these pods over this past school year, supporting students and families within-person remote learning. Uh, if you can kind of put those two terms together. Um, but we heard a lot tonight from teachers about the struggles, uh, this year in, in really implementing learning in a remote environment. And we found that working with, you know, students in homes, uh, on that remote piece, um, could really bring together, um, learning in a, in a way that more, uh, closely resembled what was happening in the classroom, um, before COVID. Um, well, you know, from this long list, I'm sure you can gather that we hold broad access to our programming as a foundational core value. Uh, while Basic was founded in Belmont, of course, um, we have invested in our organization over the years so that we are positioned with the infrastructure to replicate what we do in Belmont in another community. Um, and now, the pandemic was particularly harsh on the out-of-school time field. Many organizations struggled, not just here in Maynard, to reopen and many closed their doors. Um, we, we all really won't see, you know, as a society, what this impact will have until, you know, the months to come in the coming year. But the current situation here in Med, in, in Maynard, we, we saw an opportunity where we can help the community, but also to work with school partners and community stakeholders who share our vision for what out-of-school time can be. If you bear with me a little bit, I'd like to take you through our philosophy so that you can get a picture of what basic programming would look like in Maynard. Uh, I, I really like to describe our philosophy as resting on three pillars, academics, enrichment, and community. And each of these plays a role, an, an important role in the programming at each site each day. Uh, and Colleen, I don't know if you're still in charge or in control of the slides. We had sent just a few simple slides that if you wouldn't mind bringing up the first one. Give like a thumbs up if people can still see. Yeah, great. So, uh, I'll start with academics. Um, and we heard, uh, you know, from teachers tonight, and I'm sure a lot of you know, um, as major stakeholders volunteering your time, um, in schools. In schools today, you know, academics, academic expectations are set very high and students must develop effective work habits to meet those expectations. And not only that, but to maintain their emotional wellbeing. Uh, anyone here who has a stuffed email, um, inbox really knows that feeling of having, having looming unfinished work. Um, it's something we all really have to live with and, and, and learn to work, um, to be successful, um, to manage. At the elementary level, our homework routine is very strictly structured. We believe in doing homework in grade-level groups at the same time in the same space every day. Each grade is led by a consistent teacher who manages that supportive network between home and school. And that teacher is the point of contact for each classroom teacher for that grade so that our team stays informed of the assignment each day, as well as the classroom expectations. That teacher is also responsible for delivering feedback, both to home and to school, about any concepts that weren't solid or challenges in exec, in, in executing the expectations. Now, a big part of this work involves an executive function coaching. And, you know, very briefly, executive functioning is sort of like the air traffic control for your brain. EF skills help you to organize your work, pace a project, apply directions to actions, manage your time and breaks. You know, effectively, it's the background work your brain is doing as you're effectively meeting any challenge. Um, we believe that EF coaching should be a part of academic routines right from the start. And a big part of that is simply being intentional about some of the tools that students have available. Uh, I'll give a brief example. Um, I know it's getting late, but I'll, I'll, I'll try to go quickly. Uh, you know, it's, it's common practice to, um, see a second-grade homework packet, let's say, come home and, you know, it's a week's worth of homework and on the, on the cover of that is a checklist that lists all of the assignments. And as adults, um, and, and, and for students working, it's very quick, easy to take that for granted and just open it up to the first thing that they have to do that day. But the checklist is a really important skill to, to, or important tool to incorporate in your, i- i- in your routine. So we're really intentional about taking that checklist and making sure that we, your students can compare, you know, the checklist to each assignment throughout the packet. And when you finish one, go back to the front and check it off. Uh, all of us would actually benefit a lot from using checklists in our day-to-day lives. And if we start building those skills early on, um, we, uh, you know, we're better at using them. Um, and if, Colleen, if you could go ahead to slide two, I just wanna note that, um, and we, we may toggle back and forth a little bit, but the first slide didn't have a lot of information. So I think we can probably just hold it in our, in our brains, another kind of executive function skill. Um, the, uh, the, you know, we, um, uh, our, our homework and executive function coaching looks different at every grade level. Um, so for instance, at our middle school program in Belmont, um, students and parents develop a homework schedule based on their interests. And I'll talk about those interests in a second when I, when I move to our second pillar, uh, enrichment. And they balance those interests with the, the availability. And they balance those interests with the, the availability of resources to meet their individual academic needs. So let's say a student who is most successful when they're participating in our small group homework, needs that real extra support and extra structure, would have to set up their schedule so that they're available at, say, 3:30 when the small group homework meets each day, um, so that they're getting that extra, extra work. Now, that's, you know, looks different than the, than the elementary school student, but, um, is, is developmentally appropriate for their grade level and still builds an effective routine for that child. I bring this slide i- i- into play because, you know, we run programs at every grade level, K through 12, so we can take a longitudinal view of development across each strand. We look at challenges, we can look at challenges, and we do look at challenges that we see that create problems for our high school students, and then look back at how we can be intentional about appropriate skill-building for students at elementary grades. We feel this is tremendously valuable. In fact, we've, um, been started to work on developing our own qualitative assessments to really better understand that impact. Um, but, you, you know, that is a piece that, um, that, when you take seriously, uh, the academic component of, of out-of-school time, we real, you know, we can see, um, the, the, uh, the skills build over the years for students that we work with. Uh, now, I know it's getting late, so I'm gonna, I'm going to, um, pivot really quickly and talk about our second pillar, and that's enrichment. And, you know, very quickly, personally, I, uh, I committed my career as an educator to out-of-school time because I so strongly believe in the importance of pursuing goals and content in an area of passion. And Richmond at Basic is designed to help students find interests to begin with, and then to make opportunities available to follow those interests into more rigorous and rich expla- exploration. One way we do this is by investing in our teachers. So Basic programs have full-time teachers, um, some of whom we call curriculum specialists, who write and implement unit and lesson plans in their area of expertise. Um, you know, for purposes of time tonight, I'll focus in on the work of a, a STEM specialist, let's say, at Basic, so you can understand how that resource benefits students. Um, the STEM specialist is tasked with, um, meeting two big responsibilities. First is developing programming that, um, reaches a broad, at, you know, i- i- as broad access as its goal. So that could look like a, a daily STEM project where students could, you know, hear at the group meeting at the beginning of the day that this project was being offered, and they're just invited to come, uh, during that time and try the project. If they don't like it, it's okay. If they decide halfway through they want to play Monopoly with their friends or go to the gym, that's fine. They can opt out, and there's, you know, obviously no consequence except the fact that you didn't get to finish the project. There's also things like weekly STEM challenges or these, uh, kind of daily low-bar, um, challenges that, you know, invite students to try. And their second responsibility is to develop really progressive opportunities that apply more rigor. These look like our workshops and our vacation programs. They delve deeply into an area of interest. Our Makerspace camps, uh, robotics, uh, workshops, coding and 3D printing. Students commit to participate in these programs for a prolonged period of time and work through progressive skills. And they do so in a group of similarly, uh, similarly, sorry, committed students. These opportunities result in rich, a rich growth of skills, not just the content-related skills, but also 21st century skills like collaboration and creative problem-solving, as they're working with a group of peers on, um, what can sometimes be a, really a shared goal, or if not, you know, a, a kind of side-by-side goal that, 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 that the classroom shares. So finally, I'll talk about, uh, our, our, our third pillar, and that's community. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, we build partnerships with our schools and our communities so that our programs feel like extensions of the school day. The developmental research is really clear on this, that students thrive when they make connections with trusted adults in out-of-school-time programs. And, you know, for the sake of time, I, I won't go into the detail about each one of those aspects, but I do want to mention very briefly our relationship-building pedagogy, uh, the nurtured heart approach. Um, we use that and, and, and actually combine it with, um, uh, you know, something that Bethland, uh, mentioned earlier tonight, uh, growth mindset to, um, connect with students through positive recognition of their efforts and in a way that they embrace that they are growing and learning skills, um, that they don't necessarily have yet, and that's okay, and, and, and skills that, that demonstrate community values. Part of our organi-, you know, part of our commitment to community, uh, in each of our schools and the way to really bring that authentic, you know, feel to participation in each school is connecting to the community through events as well. So we really believe in bringing parents into our programs for events like pumpkin carving, uh, in October for community outings, which, um, we do sometimes even into Boston or, you know, locally. Uh, and we are, we are really, um, big, um, fans of and, and believe very strongly in demonstrations of student work, uh, whether it be shows or, you know, uh, each one of our Makerspace groups will always have a, uh, some sort of, sort of performance. Sometimes it's even, you know, and this was pre-COVID, sharing, um, eh, the work the students did, uh, virtually, um, with parents. And that happens a lot through our coding, uh, curriculum, um, or filmmaking and, and, and other classes like that. And I've talked in detail about some of these things tonight, but in the vein of connecting to the community, I'd like to invite everyone here, and we'll be inviting, um, folks, you know, who aren't here tonight, but, uh, uh, other folks throughout Maynard, to our community dialogue next week on Wednesday. Um, that night, we'll be discussing some of these programs in more detail. Uh, we'll be talking about what, um, our programs would look like at both Green Meadow and at Fowler. Um, I think there is, you know, especially from the, um, results of the data we saw from the survey, uh, last week, so, um, some limited, uh, interest about a high school program, although I'm not sure that there's enough really to start in September with something like that, but for folks who'd be interested in coming and learning about what we do and what that might look like, uh, we'd love to have folks there that night. And, um, and, uh, like I said, we'll be able to, I think, have more time, uh, and not keep folks late, late at night talking about some of these details, but we'd love to, love to see you join us.
That's fantastic. Um, this is amazing, and I'm really excited about it. You know, we, we were hopeful, um, but this is, this is everything that Brian explained to me that it would be, and I, I really hope that parents are as excited about it as I am, um, just learning about it. And the fact that you already have a community dialogue, like, presentation thing scheduled and ready for next week is fantastic because, um, we are slow to get going sometimes, and especially this year, it's been difficult, and there's been a lot going on, but you're jumping right in and you're getting right to business, and that's what we needed more than anything. And so thank you so much for putting in the time and the effort and, um, and really engaging our community because the need is there, the want is there, and, um, you know, we will respond to anything that you have to, you know, provide for us. So thank you so much for this. I'm gonna go through the committee members so that they can ask questions. Um, I don't have any at this point. Jessica?
I'm just curious in regards to, like, teacher training to make sure that the, um, the, like, uh, homework groups and whatnot that you're talking about, those small groups are inclusive. Do you have teachers who have a background of incorporating kids who might have IPs or accommodations or whatnot?
We do, and to be, you know, you know, to be clear with, uh, these programs that, you know, we'd be starting, we would be hiring new teachers. Um, you know, we don't, we don't have, you know, a kind of serve, number of teachers that we would just transfer over. Um, you know, we, we do expect that we're going to be scaling back up our Belmont programs. And pre-COVID, we, uh, had almost 700 students participating in our programs in Belmont. So, you know, we, we do anticipate we'll be scaling those programs back up. But training teachers is, um, you know, fundamental to what we do. You know, Annie's position, I, I, I introduced Annie, uh, earlier. She's now our Director of Impact. Uh, Annie is, um, our, um, our kind of central, um, designer of, of training. And Annie and I do work together on, on that, and others in our leadership team as well. But we, we, we start with our kind of, kind of philo- philosophical pieces like nurtured heart approach and develop trainings in each of those, uh, in each of those areas to, you know, make sure that teachers are, are, um, using the, the skills and techniques that, that we believe, believe in and know work. And it doesn't just stop with that training at the, at the start. It's, it's a matter of, uh, of having a sophisticated, really, we call it kind of three-pronged, um, uh, observation and evaluation tool, uh, that we use over the course of the, of the school year. And it won't just be the, uh, the, the director, the directors, really, because there will be a direct. It, it looks like, at least from the, from the, um, survey that we sent out, the need for a director at both Fowler and Green Meadow for next year because of student participation. It won't just be those managers, um, observing and providing feedback and, and, and continued training for teachers. It will be Annie and I doing that as well. And the last kind of piece to that that I think is really important is that we are, we will be running our in-person summer program this summer, and we do plan on having those new hires at our summer program so that they're learning from our experienced teaching staff. Um, you mentioned briefly how it ties into inclusion and, and with, you know, possibly special ed training. And that is something we look for in hires, certainly, and we have a number of teachers that have a sped background. And I have a bit of a sped background, and Annie does as well. Um, it, but like I said, those teachers aren't hired yet, so I, I don't know. I can't speak specifically to what any of those direct skill sets are, but, um, but certainly, it's something that we look for in hiring teachers. Um, and, and we, and we use some of the, you know, uh, the administrative components that we, that we have in place to make sure that we are meeting individual needs.
And then one, um, other just quick question. In terms of offering that programming, where we're such a smaller community, do you see us, like, regionalizing so that you get enough to offer all of the different classes? Or, it's like when you're going from 700 students, you can do a STEM class, you can do an art class, you can do a, and you're gonna have enough kids for each, each, um, interest? Where we're so, I mean, we're not even a quarter of that population you have in Belmont, probably. So how do you envision making that work while still offering a robust, um, number of classes that will appeal to everyone?
Sure. That's a great question. Um, when we first looked at this, um, and we were using kind of some numbers, um, that, uh, you know, Wayne and Colleen had kind of put together by, by talking about what the, what the previous programs looked like. It looked, um, like, to me, that I should develop three different, uh, models for what would look like next year. One that might involve as few as 100 students participating, one that involved, um, about 150 students or 130 students at, at, at Green Meadow and only about 40 at Fowler. And then the, you know, maybe not at the beginning of next school year, but possibly this is something to work for down the line, 150 students at Green Meadow and 100 at Fowler. And, and honestly, I think we'll grow beyond that. I think when parents start to see, um, what they might get out of programming, we might, we'll see higher numbers. I mean, at our Burbank site, for instance, we have over 70% of the school using our programs. And usually what you see from programs in, you know, this area is between 25 and 35% of, of the school using programs. So I do think there's a lot of room for growth, but back to those models, all three of those models included having curriculum specialists. Now, it wouldn't be, you know, three at each site. Obviously, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have three curriculum specialists for 35 students. You know, that, that wouldn't be the model. If there were that few students at Fowler, we would assume that we're probably combining, you know, programs at some level. But the survey that we sent out showed that there was about 150 students, uh, interest, possibly interested from Green Meadow and almost 100 students at Fowler interested. So we might be looking at that third, uh, model right away. And with that model, we would be trying to hire three curriculum specialists for each site.
Thank you. That's awesome. Um, so basically, you'll be providing staff according to whatever the population's needs are?
Yes. I mean, a lot of that is dictated by our license with the EEC. A school-age program is 13, well, say 13-to-1 ratio, but it's, it kind of depends on the classroom. But as, as kind of a back-of-the-envelope calculation, you could say that, you know, you need to have a teacher, uh, for every 13 students. We do have specific needs that we know, um, work best for any program and would need to be in place for a successful program. Of course, the site director, we, we, we love using a family engagement specialist at each of our sites. That's the person who, you know, so the site director's not the, you know, where is each group moving? Where is each student moving? Who's here for pickup? Um, this person is kind of the central communication hub. And if it's like our other programs, that person also probably serves on our operations team. And then, of course, the curriculum specialists, who would be delivering that, um, specialized curriculum, as well as lead teachers for each possibly grade, if those numbers are the same as what they look like. If they're not, you know, maybe it's combining, you know, two grades at a time at first. And then support staff within, uh, it's something that we wouldn't be able to do right away, but something that's been very successful in Belmont. And, and I think, I know meets a big community need is our future teacher program, and this is something that Annie has really developed over the years. It's a high school training program, a three-part program where we do a, a classroom training, um, where we get into skills that are gonna be really valuable, uh, for students to know and, and be able to implement, you know, right away, and then two separate training days. Before the pandemic, you know, we would have, you know, 30 to 35 high school students working in our programs. You know, it doesn't require a full-time teacher to be, you know, like, for instance, we time reading for elementary school students. Um, you know, in Belmont, it's 10 minutes for first grade, 15 minutes for second grade, 20 for third, 20 for fourth. So we time that for, for kids. You know, you check in. When you're finished, you, you, you show that your homework is put away. This, again, is an executive function skill, put away and, and ready for a teacher to check. While they're, while that teacher's doing that, you can walk up and check in for reading. It doesn't require an adult to time students reading. That's something high school students can do. But we do notice that over time, we've seen high school students, by the time they're seniors, turn into really valued, valued colleagues, um, that at a staff meeting, you'd be surprised what sort of feedback they offer and, and the things that they notice. I mean, it's a really powerful, uh, first job experience for high school students.
Great. Awesome. Jessica, you're all set? Yep. Okay. Bethland?
Yeah, um, this is all awesome. I love the nurtured heart. I love that. That's just such a cool term. Um, I'm wondering about a few things. I mean, I just will say overall, it sounds very exciting and love the parent forum. I can say, just from my experience, um, wondering about if there is the option to try it out for kids, if they could come and see if they're into it, because I could, um, just wondering about that. Knowing past experience and thinking about my children and whether or not they'd be willing to try it out.
Sure. Um, no, I mean, it, it's something that we've certainly done in the past, where we, we've had students come for, you know, a certain amount of time. I would, I would say that I, I, I do feel like, um, for a lot of students, it is helpful to get into routine. Um, and for young elementary students, I think it's helpful to come at least a couple days a week. I think one day a week can feel disjointed. Um, so there are certain things that I do recommend for parents who ask, you know, questions about trying it out and getting their feet wet. Uh, I would say one thing that is, um, a really, you know, successful way, and I think, you know, by successful, I mean, we've seen this work for a lot of students over the years in, in, in to start using more and more of our programming, is to start with a workshop. Um, so it's not something where, uh, a child necessarily needs to come to after-school for the full six hours, but the workshop, you know, let's say it's like a, you know, second-grade cooking workshop, um, and they really showed interest in cooking. And, you know, they'll come for an hour and do the cooking workshop and leave when they're done, and they do that consistently. And, and you have to do it for all 10 weeks because you signed up for it. It's kind of like signing up for, you know, T-Ball or anything like that. Like, you can not like it, but you signed up, so, so continue with it. And when that's over, you know, then you can make a decision to either try a couple workshops next time or maybe you want to sign up for a couple days a week. But that's a way to kind of ease into basic programming that we've been, you know, we've seen successful, uh, success with in the past.
Yeah. And then I guess the other things where there is some great things that we've had in the past. We're, obviously, I'm sure you've heard of our beloved programming previously. And, and thinking about the flexibility that parents had, when you start, you could start, when you could stop, like you just alluded to, number of days that you could have your child in. And I'm just wondering if some of that will be able to be mirrored, and then also wondering about, um, if similar kind of, um, fees will be, it will be at similar levels. Just wanted to just understand that, basically. Very basic. You don't need to get into the details, but just over.
Sure. I mean, I, I will, you know, let me start with the, with the. Sure, I mean, I, I will, you know, let me start with the, with the accessibility. And it's always been a, a really foundational value for basic to make, you know, program, our program as flexibly offered as possible. So again, if families want to come one day a week, that's great. If it's two days a week, great. If it's just before school, you know, that works. Um, COVID, I would mention, did make things a little bit different in this regard. So, you know, this past year, we did have to run, you know, only three different program options, a five-day, a Tuesday, Thursday, a Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Now, I'm very much assuming, and I think I'm safe to do so, to say that we're gonna be able to move back to. Um, you know, our more flexible offerings, um, for how you were involved, you know, going into next year. Um, but I just want to throw that out as a caveat, that we're, we're not sure yet that that's going to be the case. Um, but, um, you know, as far as that, uh, you know, flexibility as well, you know. Parents can always come and pick up at any time, um, you know, if it's, I want to come in at four o'clock, I want to go at four thirty. The one thing I always say to parents is, you will find as your child participates that there will be natural transition times and you. It's, it, it makes a lot of sense to try to know those, because it's not gonna be our thing, it's gonna be the child's thing that says you can't come before the gym's over. Because I think I'm gonna finish the gym today. So like, understanding what, you know, that your, your child's interests are really important in that. And, and, and what our schedule, and how it maps to our schedule. Um, as far as the, um, uh, price, I mean, we, the, the tuition. Uh, it certainly went into, um, you know, my budgeting, knowing that the. The tuition and maybe overall price sensitivity in Maynard is not quite the same that is in Belmont. And what we did is we, um, tried to first get a feel for all the neighboring districts. So, you know, we looked at ACT and with it still, we looked, you know, Lincoln, you know, pick all, you know, all of the, you know, different communities to say like. What are their programs charging to make sure that we're at the bot, you know, try to be at the bottom of the, of, of all of those. Um, I, I, I would say directly that we, we can, we will not be as low as, you know, what Excel was before. I think the numbers that we saw were, you know, twenty-nine hundred for a five-day program and is, is, that's impossible, um, to do. Uh, with our model, but it won't be the, you know, it won't be the, you know, five hundred and fifty dollars a, a, a month. For a five-day program that we, that we do in Belmont, it will be far below that.
Great, and in consideration of scholarships, do you know if that's possible?
Oh, yes, certainly, um, you know, we, um, it's even though Belmont, I think it's a reputation of being, you know, only an upper-class. Uh, town, it is not, um, um, there's, there is great need throughout Belmont. Um, before COVID, um, we were, um, giving out about a hundred thousand dollars per year in tuition assistance to families. Um, we developed into that twenty-six, but prior to twenty sixteen, I used to use a sliding scale similar to the state. When someone would apply for tuition assistance, but we redid our program in twenty sixteen. Our, uh, our board wanted to look at a couple of things. One is trying to make sure that families are, you know, taking all the steps, you know, possible. To try to make themselves eligible for and sometimes join that long waitlist for state, uh, aid. Which is delivered in the form of vouchers and, and we accept vouchers, of course, but, um, you know, getting families to make sure that they've signed, you know. Got, gotten themselves on the waiting list for that, for those vouchers. Uh, and then it's just a matter of, you know, uh, filling out our, our, um, uh, our application and, and demonstrating that need. And we deliver it at three levels, fifty percent, seventy-five percent, or ninety percent, uh, discount of tuition. So that would still be, that would be something that we'd replicate in Maynard as well.
Thank you.
All right. Natasha?
Yes, thank you very much, um, and yeah, I, I think families are so used to a program that we had. So great Excel, so I know you have some big shoes to fill as far as community, um, historical understanding. And it's really great that, uh, Danielle, and you have that, you know, that foresight to kind of plan and, and, and. Bring that into consideration in the execution of whatever model that you end up doing in Maynard. Um, my questions are, um, in considering that some kids will not have. This will be a new program that they will not have any experience with and coming off of COVID. Where, um, transitions, a lot of new is gonna be, um, very different for kids. At the end of the day, there might be some social emotional, um, anxiety, um, as they're coming back to school after all of this. Do you anticipate hiring a counselor or having someone on staff that can help with some of those, um, emotional? Um, in light of just our circumstances right now to, to help with kids that may need, um, help emotionally. With, um, transitions or homework anxiety or any of those things.
Uh, sure, great question. I, I, I think that, I mean, you, you're highlighting, um, I think a. Uh, 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 it's not just, it's not just Maynard that a, a, across the country. For, uh, you know, a lot of children are gonna be returning to, uh, to programs that they, they feel like they have zero connection to. Because probably their program was either closed or operating in a very, um, uh, you know, very reduced size, uh, for this past school year. So that's a, i- is going to be a, a common problem in the field. Um, but the, the, the nice part about out-of-school time is, you know, our, our wheelhouse is social emotional learning. I mean, that's what programs are founded on and, and, and folks who work at out-of-school time programs. Um, do so because they typically share, um, uh, the characteristics of having that. You know, starting with that caring, um, and nurturing approach. And, and honestly, those who have done it for, for many years are used to trying to create that, uh, feeling of nurturing. And welcoming, uh, at the beginning of the school year, because you'll always have students, kindergartners, for instance, coming in who have, you know, maybe they went to daycare. But coming to a school and then transitioning to after school is different. Uh, and, and so there has to be a lot of intentionality, uh, placed on trying to make sure the environment is one that is accepting. And we understand each other and, and is really in tune with, um, with, with children's needs. Uh, one thing we've been really successful with over the years, um, you know, this dates back to pre-COVID, is a, um. Is a procedure we call relationship mapping, um, and so that's trying to make sure that we're really building a strong relationship. With each individual child right from the start and, you know, we kind of create this big board that teachers take part in and, and, and kind of sticker in a way. To show their relationship, um, with each child, um, so that we can make sure that no one's slipping through, uh, the cracks. And that we're, we're developing those relationships from the start with each, uh, with each student. Uh, I had not actually, um, considered hiring a, a guidance officer for, uh, for the program. Not gonna say it wasn't, you know, it wouldn't be out of the realm of possibility, uh, I think, you know, considering the needs of COVID. It might be something that, um, would be, uh, you know, that, that should maybe be a high priority. So I will look into doing that as well. Um, but, uh, but it's not something I had, I, I had thoroughly explored to this point, but I appreciate you bringing up the, the, the question. It will certainly be something I'll look into.
To chime in, can you guys hear me? I'm Annie, by the way, um, Andrew, I think has mentioned me a couple of times, but I also wanted to just jump in if that was okay, Andrew. Um, that, you know, one of the things that we hope to do at Green, um, Green Meadow and Fowler is really building relationships with the school. And the teachers and the staff at the schools, um, I think, kind of to your question, I think it will be vital for us. Really have strong relationships and work on those relationships with the counselors at the school. Because in our experience, we found that, you know, when we've had a student that has been struggling, you know, for whatever reasons. Having that connection with the teachers and the staff that are working with them during the daytime has actually had significant success. And has helped coach us as to how to, you know, transfer whatever skills they've been working on in the school day into the after-school program as well. So that would be one of our hopes as well is, you know, even if, you know, not necessarily if we couldn't hire a counselor, how we can work with the schools. Um, to really kind of continue that support from the school day into out-of-school time as well.
Thank you, um, and kind of along the similar lines, a, a, a lot of what your program is talking about are these, these classes. And, and I also think the important part is unstructured, I think at the end of the day, that the kids need. Unstructured, going outside and play, and this is gonna be a lot of catch-up with my friends. I haven't seen them in an after-school program in a long time. I just want to make sure we're not losing sight of that essential piece that, because that was part of, a big part of Excel that they're coming off of. Is the expectation is I get to see my friend in my grade, but I don't get to see during class, but go on the playground. And, and that part, um, just because I, I think that will also feed into that, um, improved, you know, the anxiety. Or, or all that, um, support for the, the child's wellbeing. Um, so that's something that will continue to be part of that, that outside unstructured free play, um, during that. Okay, great, um.
It's a great point, Natasha, it's, um, I mean, with, in, in, you know, when we look at whole child development, I think it's, it's easy to forget. Especially in today's, you know, in today's culture that, uh, children's primary job is to play. I mean, that's, that's, that really should be the, the fundamental, you know, piece to their experience. So we do make sure that unstructured time and unstructured play are. Uh, playtimes are, you know, embedded throughout each day, absolutely.
Um, and just touching on, and I know these are yet to be determined, um, but the, um. The, looking at what is happening in Belmont, I guess the, the tuition structure and the enrollment. It looks like there's the expectation where parents would need to put a deposit ahead of time, um, for a period of, of time. Is that a similar model you would expect for, for this program for Maynard? Um, cause I just want to make sure we give parents enough, because that is a, a upfront financial, um, expectation. And which hasn't happened before at Excel, so it is something like an add new. And I just want to make sure we're clear and upfront with the expectations that before enrollment, there will be a deposit in some form that will need to be. Made, um, whatever, whenever that enrollment happens, um, and is that happen, is that online also that they would be able to do that? Like through credit card or, okay?
I'm glad you're mentioning that. I didn't know that, um, it wasn't something that was asked previously to, 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 to leave a tuition deposit. It is, it's.
I know it's standard in a lot of places, but I just happen to know in, in, in Maynard, it, it hasn't been. It's just you pay each month, you know, whatever days and you register for and you pay. Um, I don't know if it's always worked to the, our advantage, but I know that it is a standard in many childcare places, you, you do a deposit. Um, but on the flip side, from what I read, is that the deposit does get credited back to your account at the end of the year, right?
Part of annual tuition, yes.
Right, okay, so it's also, it's basically you're paying upfront a month, um.
Yeah, we don't do any registration fee, it's only, the tuition deposit is part of the annual tuition, it's applied to the final invoice of the year is how we do it. Um, uh, so, but yes, uh, it would be something that we've asked and will, it will be very clear on our website that that's something that you leave at registration. And to be clear, if you're applying for tuition assistance, we don't ask, you know, folks to leave a tuition deposit. Same thing if a student obviously was on a state voucher. Um, but, uh, we are actually working right now on building out, um, the necessary pieces. For that registration to be live starting next week, uh, for Maynard. Um, so that would be, it'd be a Green Meadow and a Fowler, uh, registration. And we're gonna be, we're building out some very simple, um, you know, kind of landing pages on our site. Um, for, you know, so that it's clear to parents when they go to, you know, we, we totally understand that the. There, it's maybe a little bit of a, a, you know, kind of brand confusion if you're going to a, you know, basic, come on a basic site and say like, I'm really supposed to sign up here. So we want to make sure those landing pages for Green Meadow and Fowler, feature pictures of the schools are very clearly labeled that this is, you know, the.
Thank you for being thoughtful that way, I appreciate.
Oh, absolutely, yes, uh, and then when you go to register, you'll have a dropdown menu as you probably, if you've gone and seen how ours work for Belmont.
I did, I did, yeah, it was, thank you.
Within that dropdown menu, there'll be a, a Green Meadow option, there'll be a Fowler option, and then it will bring up the before and after-school options for, for both of those. Um, it won't be what you will see later in the summer, um, because, I mean, it will just take time to really build out. What those, you know, look like with all of the pieces, uh, and the, you know, the architecture that is there for. All our Belmont sites to replicate those for Maynard, uh, it's actually taking a little bit of a restructure of our website to kind of. Make the architecture kind of mirror itself so that we have two different layers, uh, to, to, that, that it feeds to. Um, but that will be something that will be ready, you know, by, by mid to late summer.
Great, and then, um, just two last things, one about, um, uh, kids. Like I know that you probably have a process already, but just thinking about like medication or emergency, all those pieces. That will also be communicated next week, like for kids who have allergies, um, will you be serving snacks also? And, um, as part of the after-school, because I know that's something that Excel did do and I just wanna, that will be part of the tuition as well. Okay.
Wayne's gonna jump in on this because.
Oh, I see Wayne.
You unmute Wayne, please.
And by the way, you know, I see you and Jeff chomping away over there, eating some probably nice goodies. Uh, I'm trying to concentrate here and that's not very fair, so I just wanna. Late dinner.
Um, I was gonna talk about, uh, I've already talked to, uh, food service. Uh, through the USDA International School Lunch Program, there is a, uh, after-school snack program. That we can work with food service pro, uh, department to provide and coordinate with basic. And we can get reimbursed, so, uh.
Awesome.
Is yes.
That's terrific, so thank you for, for putting that out there, um, and, um. Uh, oh, my last question was, I, I, um, Jessica touched on it earlier, was about special education. I know that, um, there are kids that, you know, do have certain accommodation or expectations for IP's. I just want to make sure that, you know, Jeff, you and, um, or someone in the special education department has an opportunity to liaison with you. About, about those, um, needs.
Um, yeah, no, taking, um, so taking a couple of your earlier questions first, I mean. I was, I was, I was so impressed when Wayne brought this up at a meeting, you know, we had like a couple of weeks ago and he said, I think I know this program that might be able to deliver. You know, and, and reimburse us for snacks and I was, I was, I mean, I had never heard it, I was blown away by it, wow, that's, uh, I was so impressed by it. Um, so that's, that would, that will be wonderful, um, and, uh, going back to your question about, um, training for medication. And, and, and accepting medication from, from families, um, and part of our licensure is actually that. The medication training is, is part of, of what educators need to do. Um, we also use a student database called Reddicker, uh, many school districts actually use it, I'm not sure if Maynard uses it, do you? Yeah, um, oh no, okay, um, so in our database, we, uh, have the ability to design a form. Um, that we send out to all registered families, uh, in the summer. And so, those of you who work with databases at work, you're probably familiar, but, uh, you know, basically those track the fields. Uh, and we asked parents questions about, about their child, that's transportation, that's contact information, that's, um. That's even academic, uh, preferences and, and, and feedback, but it's also importantly medication. And there's two parts, um, is individualized healthcare plan, that's filled out with any, for any student that has, um, any sort of. Health condition, whether or not, you know, um, necessarily involves medication, but certainly if it does involve medication. And the second piece, that is a medication consent form, and the state is very strict and has become more strict over the past few years on these two pieces. Um, where medication, um, you know, um, kind of storage and delivery and recording is. Um, is something that they check, um, multiple times of the year, they, they, they check our processes. Um, so it is, it's something we take, I mean, of course, we take very seriously, but, um, it's something that is vetted by us over and over. But also vetted by the state, uh, to make sure it's done accurately and effectively.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, and then your last, uh, piece about the, um, about connection to the sped department. Um, I, I do feel that it's, it's, it's very helpful to have that, um, communication, um, with. Whether it's, you know, the sped director or, um, or liaisons, uh, and specialists that work, uh, in the district. Because, I mean, as we know for special education, every, you know, it's an individualized plan, I mean, that's the, that's the I in an IEP. It's an individualized plan, even with a five oh four, you're talking about what the individual need is for this child. Um, and so, and so each one of these look different, um, and if there's anything that we can do to either replicate what's happening during the school. Or, um, uh, you know, sometimes i- i- it involves like bringing students to our program and, and in a cer, in a certain way. Or making even some of the, uh, you know, manipulatives or, you know, uh, uh, other pieces that are, that are integral to a, a student. Doing homework effectively, you know, whatever we can do to try to, you know, mirror or replicate, uh, or even sometimes. Uh, be part of, uh, those plans, um, is, is extremely helpful. We do ask parents to upload, um, IEPs or five oh fours in that enrollment form that I talked about into our, into our database. And we. see some parents do it. Um, sometimes it takes building trust, uh, with parents before they, they would like to do that, but I would say it's very helpful when parents want to offer, um, that because uh, like I said, Annie and I have a little bit of a special ed background and, and, and being able to read, uh, through services that are offered to children, even if we're not able to replicate them at basic, uh, can be extremely helpful. But also that is a very good starting point for us to, um, connect with school, um, about what is happening and what's successful during the school day.
Thank you. And welcome to Maynard.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mary?
Um, yeah. So, um, Natasha had mentioned initially, but you do have big shoes to fill because we have had, um, Excel has been around for a long time. It's a very beloved program. Actually, the, um, executive director is, is, um, part of this call. So just, uh, shout out to Lois because she's given her heart and soul to this for many years. So, um, she might even be looking for a job, which would be great. But, um, so, um, and I really, one of my concerns that, um, that you addressed was the physical, you know, the physical activity. Um, because these kids are, you know, sitting all day and we know that obesity has become such a, uh, more pronounced, um, situation thanks to COVID and, and, you know, and that. So I'm really, I, I'd like to hear a little bit more, not, not a lot, because I know it's getting late, but how do you incorporate the physical activity piece? Is it just if a kid doesn't feel like doing, you know, a, a project, then they can go to the gym or is there gonna be more structure about that?
We do really like structured gym games. I, I will say from my experience, I, I'm not a big fan of free gym where there's a bunch of balls just set out and students kick or throw or, you know, whatever is, I think it's, it's intimidating for students that don't really like to be part of, you know, kind of the the chaos that that feels like. And I, and to be honest, it feels chaotic to an adult, uh, done a lot of coaching, uh, over the years. Um, and I, I really like structured gym games. Um, so we offer gym, structured gym games for, um, you know, whether it's each grade level, sometimes it's a game that we announce it's going to happen that any student can be involved in. We pretty much like to have the gym open all day with options for, for, for students. And we really try to encourage, you know, students to, to be part of, part of those, both by trying to make it fun and engaging, but also, um, trying to find those students to encourage them to, to be part of it. We also have some kind of larger, um, pieces that we like to do that really, you know, get more students involved. And one of the favorites, uh, at our elementary school program at Burbank is what we call the Olympics. And we take the whole month of, of January and split all students onto different teams. And each day there's a, there's an event that all students do, uh, together, you know, in, in, in a friendly competition with, with each other. And um, it's a way to get, you know, uh, again, students more familiar with gym games and more familiar with, um, with the teachers who, you know, especially if, if it's a, if a sports specialist, um, you know, and build a rapport with that, with, with that teacher who's leading the activity, um, so that they're more comfortable to continue going to the gym and playing games. Um, we do, we do like to also offer structured outside games as well, but there's the free outside play, uh, is obviously a big component. And, uh, and I would agree with you that I, I feel like this year, uh, I have been shocked at how, um, students, um, have, you know, uh, probably lo- even lost some gross motor skill over the course of the year and, and certainly, um, lost a lot of the kind of physical fitness, um, that would be, you know, not just what we typically see, but just normal for childhood. Um, to see kids get tired in gym games after 10 or 15 minutes and need a break. Um, it is as like an eight or nine year old is, is shocking and it's worrisome. So it's something that we um, take very seriously and, and we'll be doing everything we can to have kids being physically active while they're at our programs.
Good answer. And who do we, um, who do we have to thank for, um, for introducing you to Maynard? Is it Danielle?
Danielle.
Kudos to Danielle.
Oh, yeah.
We really appreciate it Danielle, because this is, this is really, really wonderful. And the other piece that I really loved is, uh, we, uh, we continuously are talking about creating pathways for our students for, you know, for career, um, preparation and that. So the whole high school piece of having, you know, high school students that are interested in becoming a future teacher, um, is, is a really, um, good, good thing too. So I really hope that you, you know, work toward that. So.
Well, even just encouraging younger kids to find out what they're interested in and explore that. I mean, that's a pathway in and of itself. So that is, I mean, that's fantastic. I'm sorry, Mary, I didn't mean to interrupt. Are you all set?
I did have one other question, um, having to do with insurance. How is, how are you guys covered? Because obviously you're gonna be using our buildings and that. Do you, as the five oh one C three, what does your insurance policy look like? Are we hold harmless if, you know, but if anything happens?
Yes, and the sites would be added to our liability policy, uh, as additional, um, covered, um, uh, entities. So yes, and that, and the indemnification would be, and the hold harmless pieces would be added, will be added to the contract as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
My friend Wayne would like to speak.
He's gotta be.
Yeah, that's part of, uh, standard part of the contract. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll have to work out the contract. Um, I had shared with them the RFS that I had written, um, if we had not been fortunate enough to, uh, to meet them. Um, so that, those, that type of technical type of language, uh, will, will be in any kind of document that we, uh, that we use as between the two groups.
Thank you. That's it.
All right. So I'm gonna do something that's gonna be really unpopular, I think. But I also think it's important. I see Brian wincing like, what are you, what are you doing? But I think it's important because this program is so it up to Lois. If she wants to speak or ask any questions, Jess O'Toole, who is head of our local CPAC, and then Elizabeth Albota and, um, or Albita and Hillary Griffiths, who are two new SC members who will be starting on July first. So if you guys want to ask questions or, or make comments or anything, please raise your hand and Colleen will unmute you. All right, Elizabeth and Hillary. And you can turn on your camera if you want. You do not have to, because you're probably in bed right now.
Hi, I am actually in bed right now. I'm not gonna turn my camera on. Um, thank you for asking, letting me ask a question. Um, quick question I have is the high school kids who are potentially doing this teacher training program. Um, is there any sort of certification of any kind they're getting of, like an early education sort of certification route that they get from that? And/or are they getting some kind of payment?
Oh, it ain't.
Yeah. Colleen, can you unmute?
Thank you so much. Yeah, I can explain a little bit about future teachers. So, uh, in a, our normal model that we do in Belmont, it's, uh, we give students six hours of community service. Um, because in Belmont, they do have a community service, uh, uh, allotment of, that they need for graduation requirements. Um, so we credit them six hours of community service and they part of sort of what we advertise with them and that what they do with, you know, when they do our program with me is also how to, you know, add this to their resumes and add this to their college, um, applications as well. So it's sort of this, um, professional nation course with us, but then we also offer additional services to help them realize how do they market themselves with these newfound skills. That, um, and then, and then just to clarify with the EEC, they also, once they become employed by us, so a lot oftentimes, most of these teachers will actually then come work for us. They then also have to complete, um, the requirements that are needed for them for EEC, which for most of our high school employees is pretty minimal. You know, they'll have to do, I think, a total of five hours of professional development over the course of the year. Um, and that's just to meet the EEC teacher, um, you know, minimal requirements. So they do sort of hit, uh, general professional requirements as is needed.
All right. That's fantastic. Thank you. Hillary.
Hi, um, my, I have two questions. One is, we've had really amazing teachers with Excel and VASC. Um, would you do any sort of outreach to try to hire any of them for your program? And then second of all, um, I know some kids with behavior difficulties have been kicked out of before and after school programs in other towns. And I'm wondering sort of what behaviors you're willing to handle, what behaviors would cause you to get rid of a child? What behaviors would cause you to, you know, try to get paraprofessional support for a child who has it during the school day? It doesn't have it in your program.
Yeah, good questions. Um, at first, uh, regarding, you know, any teacher who either worked at Excel previously or VASC previously, uh, or, you know, a, a teacher or aide, uh, or classroom assistant that is working, you know, in Maynard schools now, we would certainly want to talk to those folks about working at basic programs. As, as I mentioned before, we will be hiring over the course of the summer and there are a lot of positions to fill and we would love to talk to those people. Um, I mean, overall, even if, you know, take this, you know, individual situation out of it, but having consistency that students see from school day into after school is extremely important. So, uh, you know, if they're seeing the familiar face from the school day, um, you know, everything else, like the structure and the expectations tend to go along with it. So it's a, it's a really important piece and we would, we will certainly be doing that. Your second question about, um, now it's, I'm forgetting what your second question was. Um, the.
What is the threshold for?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Behaviors and what can you accommodate and what can't you?
Yeah, so, um, a, a child being kicked out of a program is a, uh, it, it should be for any organization, a last, last, last resort. And, and I mean, it, it shouldn't be the sort of thing where it's a child is kicked out of, of a program because of a behavior, but if anything, it would be be, uh, 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 a, a program has a conversation with a family because it's not the right setting for that child. Um, and there are cert- I mean, I've been doing this for 20 years. There, there have been, you know, a, 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 a couple of cases over the years where, and this sometimes went along with students having a different placement during the school day. Uh, a child needed a therapeutic placement, um, and, and, and that's not what, uh, you know, our programs are. I mean, those programs are, you know, three to one, four to one, um, you know, student to teacher, um, and they're really focused on social pragmatics and they're really, you know, focused on being able to understand, you know, um, and, and, and control, um, feelings and aggression, um, that, you know, that, it, it, that would be a, 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 hopefully a one in a thousand type of case. That's usually what it ends up being over time. Um, but there isn't like a threshold of, uh, you know, a, a child doing you know, some behavior in that, and, and that means that they're kicked out of the program. We do everything we can to try to create a, a plan that works for every individual child, uh, that's working with classroom teachers, that's working with guidance, that's working with special education, that's working with the child's family to see what works. Um, hesitate to say like behavior plan. I'm, I'm not like a big behavior plan type of person, but, uh, but certainly goal setting and checking in and, and, and a different approach for some individual children is required, um, compared to what would be the case maybe for a, another child of, of a similar age. Um, and certainly, like I mentioned before, if there are ways to connect what's successful during the school day, resources that are available during the school day. Um, we of course be open to doing that. Um, you know, there are levels of, you know, like one-on-one, you know, aide, you know, hiring that is, you know, on, on our part. I mean, that really, if you think about it, that's, that's, that's really subsidized by everyone else who's in the program. And, you know, that sort of thing is not possible, but that's usually not required. Um, so that's, you know, without really, you know, you're talking about, again, these are individual circumstances, um, but as a, as kind of an overview of, of, of our approach, that's what it would be.
Okay. Um, and, uh, Colleen, can we unmute Elizabeth one more time? I think she has a follow-up. And then, and then we'll move on to, uh, Ryan's review, which he is anxious. Oh, Jess now wants to, okay, Jess. All right. Yes, Elizabeth.
Quickly, really quickly, because there's a lot of nuance, obviously, that we don't know yet about the program, but you said that there was gonna be a community dialogue on Wednesday of next week. Can you just tell us what time that is? And how we can access that real quick? How we can, and how that's going us to the community.
And we'll post it, we'll post it and blast it.
Okay.
Yes, um, I'll let, I'll just let you all know, it's gonna be, um, seven to nine, uh, seven, uh, sorry, seven to eight thirty on Wednesday. It will be on Zoom. Um, we have a flyer and everything that we will send to Brian and Colleen so that, um, they can send it out. If that is okay with you, Brian. Um, just so that way everyone has access to it. Um, and it's just an open registration. There's a couple of questions, but everyone is welcome to join.
Awesome.
So much.
Yep. All right. Jess O'Toole.
Hi, I had some similar questions to Hillary, um, as far as how you promote positive behaviors and then how you manage challenging behaviors, but also I wanted to ask about if there's any, um, curriculum or explicit teaching of social skills and how you would promote positive social behaviors with the kids and, and perhaps deal with bullying if that came up.
Hmm.
That's a good question. Um, I, I mean, I, this, this isn't on the calendar yet, but we will put one of these on the calendar for sure and love to have you join. Um, we like to do a nurtured heart approach, you know, um, for parents. Um, i- i- in, in each community, and I think you would really enjoy, um, attending. It's, it's a, as I mentioned earlier, it's a, it's kind of, it's a relationship building, um, pedagogy where you recognize, um, students for doing the right thing. And if you watch kids, even tough kids, 95% of the time, they're doing exactly what, um, they should be doing. Um, we're draw, our attention is always drawn as just people, and this is just how people's brains work, to negative behaviors or things that are outside or unexpected. And we, uh, tend to energize those behaviors, um, with, you know, don't do that, or you know, this is what the rule is, or a lecture or a consequence. Uh, and their chart approach is really about energizing the positive things that, 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 that students do. Uh, and it looks different at different ages. Um, I mean, how you talk to a kindergartner is different than how you talk to an eighth grader. Uh, and their heart approach looks different for a kindergartner than it does for an eighth grader. Um, but it's really about, um, a- a- as you mentioned, you know, seeing students, um, that, doing the behavior that really works to build them relationships with their peers, works to, um, make them successful in school, works to make them successful in activities that they're doing, uh, at after school or beyond, and recognizing those and pointing them out. And as, uh, as a teacher, um, or a really practitioner gets more and more familiar with it, you're able to link those to values, um, you know, that you all are really staying locked in with my voice, which shows that you care about what I'm saying, um, you know, is, is the type of thing. Um, so it's, it's, it's real, it's authentic. You are doing that right now. Um, and, and, and it's, it's meaningful to be able to make a connection like that with, with children. So it's, it's through that approach that we, um, that we really build those relationships and um, build, you know, what's called the nurtured heart, a, a child's inner wealth. And that's the, the set of things that that child has, the skills, the, um, the characteristics that that child has that make them, um, you know, a, a valuable person and a valuable member of the community.
I love that. That was awesome. Oh my God, I'm gonna cry. And I don't cry because I'm pretty much a robot. But, um, all right, Jess, was that, you're good. And Lois, last chance. I don't want to put you on the spot. I just want to give you an opportunity. Okay. Um, thank you so much. Danielle, thank you for bringing them to our attention and for, for, um, instigating or initiating this, this relationship. I am so excited. I just, I can't even. I can't. Um, and thank you so much for, um, you know, hanging around for three hours with us because we get long-winded and we ask a lot of questions and, um, we used to try to cut it down, but we haven't been successful and I'm sorry for that. But thank you for staying with us and thank you for offering an opportunity for our community to talk to you next Wednesday. Um, and I'm very excited for about things to come. So thank you very much. And you're welcome to stay while we give this, you know, we review the superintendent, um, his self eval, but don't, don't feel like you have to, okay?
Probably, yes. Very nice to meet you all. Thank you very much for having us.
All right. Good night. Now on to Brian.
All right. So I should probably ask how much, you've all read it. It's, I think, I hope it's a relatively complete document for you, and I wasn't planning on reading it to you anyway.
I think right now what we need to do is if anyone has any questions or needs clarification before we go on to the second phase, which is determining which, you know, um, standards and indicators, we are going to evaluate you by, um, This is the time, and I just want to clarify, originally I thought his mentor was going to be here to answer questions. It turns out that that relationship is not supposed to be part of this evaluation. And he is not supposed to influence our evaluation of Brian. So it is just us and Brian. So, um, I'm going to go around again and see if anyone has any questions. So that you don't, I mean, and then you can fill in any blanks that you think need to be filled in after everyone's done, okay? Jessica?
Um, as Brian stated, it's very, a very detailed, well put together report. So thank you for taking the time to do that. And at this point, I don't think I have any specific questions, um, that need to be answered in advance of the next meeting. So, uh, thank you for taking.
You're welcome.
Do that, appreciate it.
All right, Bethlin.
Yeah, I, I have to say that, um, it's very refreshing to see the, the way you've put this together. And the clarity of the document itself. So I, I think I'm going to need to just, I, I, if I have any questions, I'm going to have to follow up.
That's fine. No, absolutely, you can do that.
Great, thank you.
Natasha?
Yes, I do have questions. So, uh, in review, and this is very, very thorough and thoughtful. So Brian, um, thank you very much for the hard work in, in, in putting this together. My questions are more specific to the evidence that you'd be using and sharing. Um, some of it doesn't feel very measurable in how we can assess. And I'll, I'll call it a couple of examples. So just looking at the first goal, the social emotional goal, um, that you've indicated, um, progress and evidence. It talks about you've addressed things with the staff, um, you've talked with counselors, um, for information. And the example, um, that you've provided, I, I, the wellness newsletter was good. But we said, we have surveyed staff and made adjustments. Are those surveys that we would be able to get access to, to see what the, the feedback from staff have been through the execution of, because it would, I guess, to see the progress on how, where we end up now and where we started in the, that feedback? Would be something I would be interested in, in hearing or seeing a little bit more about.
I can look at that. I can look for that and get back to you, get them, get that to you.
Okay, and just kind of looking throughout the evidence column, um, for some of the goals. Again, kind of getting a little bit more specific, um, in, in the measurable piece of how we can see the success or not. I mean, I can antidotely see that, but the data in some capacity, I think, is helpful beyond that, um, as well. So if you, I don't know if that's, if you're able to kind of look through it. If I can also punt over some other specific things, but I don't want to take up too much of that time. But through that lens of something that shows measurable, um, and is more, is specific, a little bit more, that would be helpful. The entry plan. What are your, I know that it's, is, I know the year we're coming off of. So, uh, I am in no way thinking that it would be done and ready to go. But what are your thoughts on, um, the entry plan? I know that's something that takes a lot of time. How does that, is it year two kind of? And this is, how does that, yeah, how does, how does that work?
Sure, sure. In a normal year, we would have done it earlier already. Because we would have had a lot of opportunities to get into classrooms and meet people face-to-face. This year, it's a little bit different. So you saw the entry plan mid-year this year. Because we really didn't start school until a little bit later. I have the entry findings report, which I will forward to you. In talking with Lydia, we felt like we should probably separate these two documents by a few days. Because otherwise I was going to hand you two twenty-page documents. And there was a lot of overlap.
Hold off on, on giving it to us.
But I can, um.
I would like to have it just because.
We're going to, we're going to send it tomorrow. It was just, we didn't, we didn't want to bombard you with two really long pages. So we wanted to focus on his self eval for tonight and then tomorrow give you the entry plan so that you could digest it.
That's part, isn't that part of the eval though? Like, as, as I'm reading it, that's one of the, the goals, right? So that there's something that we would have to be processing at the same time, right?
I don't know where entry plan falls under the rubric. So that's a discussion for Monday.
Okay, because it's under his goals. So that's where, um, that's in that, in that lens.
Okay.
That's where I was thinking. If that's that, that would be the, and again, I, I don't know, because this is our first, you know, last year, we, we didn't really do this with, with Mary Jane, and then we had the new rubric. So I know we're, and this year, is it anything but ordinary?
I, I mean, part, part of it was, we have all been so fractured and, and pulled, or most of us have been pulled so thin that we just, like, I didn't have to, I would not have had time to read the entry plan, period. And so maybe it was selfish of me, but I was like, no, I would rather just have us focus on his self eval this week. We talk about it Thursday. We send out the, the entry plan on Friday. We have the weekend to discuss it. And then Monday, when we all get together, um, that's when it can be incorporated into our discussion and into the evaluation and how we proceed from there.
Perfect. And thanks for framing it that way, because I also wasn't really sure of what our expectation of how we're incorporating that as well. So I appreciate you kind of doing that. I just, for myself, I want to make sure I have time to, to read it and process it. So our conversations on Monday are informed.
And it's been done. And I just, I just told him, keep it to yourself right now. We don't, we don't have the bandwidth. We're not interested.
How do you know? I, I'm up all night.
I know, I'm joking. But the thing was.
He knows that.
It, the thing is, is, well, at least for me, and I think anyone who's not a cyborg, Natasha, um, like, we couldn't read and absorb that much information, okay? So that, that's why I did it that way. Yeah.
No, I appreciate you, um, framing it that way. And, um, my last question, Brian, um, in the, actually, it's going back to the social emotional goal a little bit and just kind of piggybacking off of the, the feedback that I've heard with, um, the staff about how this year has been for them. I know we talk about what we've done for, you, you present like things you've done for the students. If there is an, a measurable piece that how we've, um, can provide to demonstrate our, the, and how we've, you know, supported the social emotional needs of the teachers and the staff as well, that would be helpful to provide as evidence, um, with that goal.
Yeah, I'm just writing that down. I'll send that along tomorrow.
Thank you. And I'm sure there's times that just would be great to just kind of put that in there, because that is one of the components, the students, the staff.
And the other thing too is Brian and I had to move our meeting from today until tomorrow. So if any of the school committee has anything you want us to discuss tomorrow, just send me an email and let me know. All right, Natasha, is that, is that?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mary?
Nope, I am good for right now. Yeah, so.
Okay. Awesome. Well, Brian, see?
You were right.
Um, I mean, who knows, between now and Monday, you may get a slew of emails, people asking you stuff. But I, I mean, y- you were pretty thorough in, in, you know, again, it's like, what, seventeen pages long or something? So, you know, my printer ran out of ink and, um, I'll be charging that back to the district. I'm just kidding. Um, so anyway, yes. So.
Can I ask one more question? Sorry, before we move off.
Of course, do it.
Um, so just again, planning ahead and knowing that the evaluation for the superintendent is really one of transparency and happens in the public eye. So can we, um, clarify also what, for the, for the community, their expectations? So the rubric, we're going to be working on the rubric on Monday, is that right?
Correct. So Monday, we'll go through the rubric. So there are four different standards. And under the standards, there are between five and seven indicators. And so we will determine which standards and which indicators we are going to evaluate him. Um, I guess, against, for lack of a better term. And then we fill out our individual assessments. You each will send me your assessment. I will compile it. As soon as the document is compiled, it becomes a public document and I have to release it immediately. So it will, it will be released and posted. Um, and, and I'm going to try and time this so that it's released and posted like the Tuesday before our Thursday meeting, so that people have time to review it and look at it and digest it. Um, so it will be on the website and, um, and you all will have it. But everyone, like the entire community is supposed to get it at the same time. It's supposed, and I don't know how we coordinate that, but we will, we'll figure it out. Um, Colleen and I are good like that. So, um, so that's how that works. And, um, and we can cover any questions about the protocols and procedures around this evaluation on Monday. And, and that's really what Monday is for.
I also would like to see if we, um, we are able to have an opportunity for the public to give feedback explicitly when we talk about the final evaluation. So at that, that meeting, that the twenty six, what is the twenty-sixth, right, we're talking about?
The twenty, I mean, the fifteenth?
Fifteenth, that's it, I'm sorry. Um, yes.
We can meet the twenty-sixth.
No, 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 I'm good. Um, but that meeting, that, um, that we just, if we're able to be a little bit more flexible and allow, um, public comment during that particular, specific to that.
So if we allow public comment, it's not going to actually be considered in the, I mean, it's good for us to know, but it's not something that, because the evaluation.
It will be done already. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I, I, well, I just want to make sure, because it is something that we've historically been able to do. And I know in our district, the superintendent evaluation, um, has been sometimes, and again, new superintendent, so new day. But is something that people focus on, um, with different granularity and, and how they want to do it. And so I just want to make sure the public does have that opportunity to either give us feedback, even if it's a more of like, we would like to see the school committee next time do this, you know what I mean? I want to have that.
Well, that was the point of the survey that I talked about earlier. So, and, you know, hopefully people respond to it. If they do, they do. If they don't, then, I mean, we can't. I have found through reference checks that you can't make people respond to you. So, um, Brian's trying not to laugh right now. Um, yeah, so, I mean, w- we will offer the opportunity for feedback. We cannot dictate whether or not we'll receive it.
Do, do we have a copy of the rubric before?
I thought that I sent it to you, but if not, I will do it tonight after the meeting.
Do that again, because I'm not finding it anywhere, so.
Okay, yep, absolutely. I can do that. Um, anything else from anyone else? We're good? Alrighty, let's go on to subcommittee reports and members' comments. You know, Jeff, I know it's way late for you. If you need to go to bed, you're okay? You've been, you've been popping coffee beans and.
He's had us, he's, he's been snacking. I mean, him and Wayne have been snacking this whole time.
Been eating chocolate-covered espresso beans is what he's been doing.
Probably.
Oh, no, he's showing us. Oh. And Wayne's a night owl anyway, so he's like all set. No, Wayne, we can't see it. Your, uh, your BB King's thing is in the way. I don't know why it's not showing up. Oh, he's having gum drops. Are those spicets?
That'll jazz you up.
Okay, um, so first up, we have Jessica Clark.
Yeah. We did not meet since last week, so I have no committee updates. And I actually missed the CPAC meeting due to a kid conflict, so, um, Natasha can update you on that one.
Alrighty, that was quick and easy. Beth, uh, Bethlin?
Yeah, so we're going through the handbook.
Which handbook?
School committee, uh, orientation-ish handbook, yep. Yep, it's good. I think we're coming along well. I really don't want to say anything else. I am so exhausted.
Okay, all right, good, you're good. All right, Natasha?
Um, okay, well, I have a lot. So, um, so CPAC, uh, met, great, great meeting. Um, Jennifer was able to attend in Little Brian, because Brian had other superintendent stuff going on. Um, Wayne, uh, I mean, Jeff, sorry, you guys are right next to each other, so, um, now, yeah, anyway. One of you showed up as well, and, um, it was great. So we, it was good engagement. We talked about, um, the positions. I, I know that, um, Jennifer spoke about re, making a little bit more, um, specific in, in the positions, the job descriptions for, uh, that were being discussed. Literacy was a great conversation. Also, um, discussed in, specifically, one of the things I was really excited to hear about, um, was that we're having, um, there's a teacher in district um, for the Spanish immersion program who is, um, seeking, um, certification for Wilson. So I, I know that has been, um, one of the, um, concerns historically raised about how we can, you know, do that or address those concerns. And so I was really excited to hear that and focus on, and I'm making this really abbreviated. Um, Jennifer was meeting with, um, MABE, maybe that, that place that, um, that came out a couple of years ago, the multi-state bilingual association or something to that effect. Um, just to use them as a continuous resource for any guidance and interventions and whatnot. And, um, she and Jeff will think about how we can get more regular updates about literacy, because there's a lot going on with screening and even with Spanish immersion, the, the, looking at tier-two, um, curricula. And I'm totally ad-libbing here, um, Jennifer, so don't be horrified if I misspeak exactly what it's called. But, um, some of those, um, components and just the pilots, they're pilots that are going to be, um, using to see what's working with the staff and, uh, screeners are happening for, uh, dyslexia. And I guess there's staff that are already using some of the screeners, which is really great. So that was exciting stuff. And, um, town budget subcommittee. Um, so that was exciting as well. And our next meeting is actually June twenty-first and a Monday. Um, the two primary issues of, um, importance that were discussed was, one, uh, the solar project. Um, at that time, the solar project was shared that, um, they were going back to, uh, Sun Power and, you know, getting, uh, see if they would reassess. I found out yesterday with Brian, um, Sun Power came back and with, did, we're not interested in pursuing the program without Green Meadow Field. So, um, based on that and what the select board has already said, that they will not do another RFP, this project will not go forward. Um, under those circumstances, however, um, it was interesting. Mary and I, um, talked because it looked like Senator Eldridge, and for FY22's budget, um, has earmarked like a hundred grand for another town to buy solar panels for their library. So Mary is gonna, Mary's going to be on the case to see how we might look in the future to, you know, maybe high school panels for the high school or something to that effect, um, and get assistance with that project. So not totally off, off, off the radar, but a pivot. So that's the solar update. The other update that is evolving, which may result in a tri-board meeting at some point, is the, uh, positions and the benefits related to the positions that the district is, um, needing to hire um, in respect, with respect to COVID, addressing COVID and regression and supporting our, our students. And, um, we, Greg gave a very quick overview. He shared a recommendation from Justin. It was a very loose recommendation, but it was only about, um, DPW and, and whatnot. He did not bring up the positions and we, Mary and I had to talk about it, um, that they need to be considered. So this will be a, a conversation. Ultimately, the, our process has always been the town supports and pays the benefits for any staff that we need. And so if we're now. And so if we're now deviating from that process, um, that's a really larger conversation on when, why we would, we would do that. It sounds like they don't want to pay for the benefits. I don't know. So anyway, we just need to do a good job demonstrating need for every position that we are looking to hire. We did clarify that that we, that FTE for the grants was rolled back to a point five. So that was readdressed, but data regarding um, to show that the need of of eight positions plus the literacy will need to be something that Mary and I, and we're all empowered with, so that we can um, you know, and that's actually kind of one of the requirements, the money, like, you know, just need to have things that are evidence-based on 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 the position. So so more to come on that. Um, the select board members in attendance, Jeff and um, David, were not totally um, agreeing with Craig's approach. They were not disagreeing, but didn't really have strong feelings about that. Although I think the meeting the other day, maybe some other members may have um, their own feelings about it. Brian, and it occurred to me as we were hearing about after-school program, so the staff that were um, hired, you know, when we had, it was a town-sponsored Excel. Those benefits were paid through the town, right? Or if they were any full-time, I'm guessing.
I believe so.
So, am I totally off-base in saying that town is now, because we are having a program internally that we will be supporting and contracting with, who will be doing their own benefits, because they're gonna be outsourced, that the town actually, we're saving the town in some way, benefits, because those staff, uh, future programs, oh, I see Colleen raises in her hand.
There are only a few um, Excel staff members, as I recall, not all, not even half of them.
But there's some, like, I mean, even if it's two. Right, those are, so there's a potential, there are people who no longer will be paying benefits for. So there's, it's not a add eight. It's maybe a little bit of a, I just want to make sure we consider that change in our conversation as well. So again, it just came up in thinking about the after-school, but it might be worth highlighting that actually, we will, you know, the town will not be needing to fund, you know, however that number is, if we can get that number of how many were, that'll be helpful to make note of. Um, and uh, we talked about pa, uh, budget stuff grants um, at the budget subcommittee meeting, the school. Brian, there's a good, healthy discussion on the, really, we need to figure out a process on money comes in or money's allocated to the town, or not to the town, to the school, and we're not ESSER money. So this is more like the the day-to-day stuff. Money comes in, how is that accepted? I think the consensus from the school department was previously, they wanted some context to like the funding of the money. So Brian and Jennifer will, I think, need to work through a a process on the best way. But I think we're on the same page. No one is looking to reject money in any capacity. It's just more having an understanding of how it's, what it's for, and a little story. You know, we, I think we all need a little story of of how it's supporting the overall, you know, the mission and tied to all those school things, which probably is part of the application process, you know, um, but, or the grant writing. But I think that, that's still more to come. In developing a business process for that. And then the ESSER funds will, will need to have a conversation as a school committee on what, how we want to if we, how we want to plan for, I don't know, just based on Tracy's um, conversation last week and her feedback. Is it something that we feel strongly about um, in certain capacities, being used for, what is the data measured? So I think the ESSER pieces are separate, like, because that's unique um, to this particular circumstances. And that's, that's all I got right now. I'm all, I'm sure I forgot a whole bunch of stuff. I'm good.
Alrighty, Mary?
Yeah, Natasha talked a lot about the budget stuff, so um, the other piece is the operations project manager that um, Brian alluded to early on. Um, we're at an exciting stage where we brought it down to three um, candidates. We interviewed them the other night. Um, and um, we'll be talking to the full board tomorrow. And then we'll be talking to the school committee on Monday night about moving somebody forward. So that's basically the only other thing I've got.
All right. Well, that leads me to adjourn us to executive session, because we're not yet done. And I still haven't had dinner, so I'm gonna eat that during executive session. So anyone who wants to go and get their food right now, go do it. So Wayne, thank you for
Hi Wayne, hi Jeff, hi Jennifer.
Thank you.
Bye Hillary, bye Elizabeth.
You very much for hanging out with us. Elizabeth and Hillary, thank you, Carol.
Carol.
He's here.
Carol.
Love you. You're awesome. All right. So here we go. Um, executive session um, to discuss strategy with respect to, I wrote this down somewhere. Uh, I can't find it. Where is my agenda? I, it's too late and I'm tired. All right, I'm just gonna read what Colleen gave me.
Yep, just the executive session, yep.
To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the custodial union and to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. The GM and FS Fowler School Assistant Principals, since an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining of the public body and the chair so declares, which I do. So roll call, vote to adjourn to executive session. Jessica Clark. Who is muted, so she will not be attending.
Also, just, I I think for this session, I would, I think Brian might be the only admin representative I'd like to be present, if possible.
Okay. Uh, uh, I don't know what the procedure is for that. All right, bye Jennifer. Thank you. Bethland Hulhan?
Yes.
Uh, Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
And Lydia Clancy. Yes, okay. So we, I believe, we're